First item of business is the budget hearing. And she has a slide presentation behind us. So I'm going to actually move off to the side a bit, so I can see it.
I believe everybody can see this clearly with the lights. So welcome, everybody. This is going to be the regional budget hearing for FY14. It's been sitting in idle too long. Okay, so before we actually talk about the budget itself, I wanted to discuss with everybody about the actual process that we went through. First, each administrator actually went through each line item for the budget that they currently had, and then we looked at what we're proposing for FY14. Now, what's really tricky for us this year is the fact that we're changing our regional agreement for FY14 to include grades 6 through 12. Where currently, we are FY13, 7 through 12. So we had to look at how we were transferring funds from the elementary schools up into the middle and high school for next year. So our regional budgets look larger than our elementary budgets, and those have been decreased. Next, we had the teachers at the secondary level work within their content area and with their team department, and the department heads, to discuss what needs they had within each genre of discipline. The collaboration, we then met with administrators. We went over our initial budget. We brought it forward to the school committee. We have continuously revised and have gone over it. We do it nonstop. We have a new management solutions. There's a new finance department that we've been working with also. So Andy Pocat and I have met regularly with the various administrators to try to discuss what type of changes we need to make to the budget to finally get to where we are today. So a little bit about our revenue projections for FY14. I just wanted to show you, in our E and D, we're planning on using $200,000. And this is out of our revenue accounts to support the budget for this year. And our school choice funding is approximately a little under $500,000. It's right here, it's $486,710. That's what we're planning on using for FY14. Our circuit breaker, we had $250,000 that we're using. Circuit breaker is a funding source that we use when we have children that are in our schools that go in out-of-district placements. And to explain that a little bit is, and I'm just going to use rounding numbers. If we look at our out-of-district placement, let's say we have a student that goes to, I don't know, let's say NECC, which is New England Center for Children. And let's just say their tuition is $100,000 hypothetically. We have to look at our foundation budget. And the foundation, if we look at four times foundation, and again, I'm just rounding the numbers. Four times foundation is $40,000. You have to take that out of that $100,000 tuition. What's left is $60,000 that we are looking at for reimbursement amount. We cannot get reimbursed that first four times foundation. When you look at that $60,000, then the state has gone anywhere over the last couple of years between 42% to 78% of reimbursement of that $60,000. So you don't get the reimbursement off of the full $100,000. Just to kind of understand it. And so we're going to be using this $250,000 of our circuit breaker money. $34,000 is looking at our preschool. We currently have a preschool program here in the middle and high school. And we get about $34,000 a year to support that program. Next is our grants, $160,000. School lunch, $160,000. And the athletic department receives $45,000. What this graph here is set up to show you is that we had as of June 30th, 2012, these are the balances on the very top line that we had in each category. So you can see, E and D, we had $326,000. Go all the way over to the end. It shows that we have in revenue as of June 30th, 2012, What the towns do is they use their money as it comes in. What we do in school systems, and most of the school systems that I've ever worked in, and I think probably Andy as well, what you do is you get the monies in one year and you use the funding the following year. Because we have to set our budgets so early, we have to have some reserves so we know how to actually give the best estimate of what our budget would be and how we use it. So if you look at the 1.3 million in our reserves, you can see as of, for FY13, as of at the end of this year, we're looking at having 1.4 million. But after the FY14 school year, we're actually looking at 1.1 million dollars. So if you look at where we were two years later, we are about $200,000 less than what we've actually projected that we're taking in. So we're actually using more reserves than what we're taking in. So we have to really be cognizant of this through time as we're going through it. But the reason why we're using this money is to help offset the increases in our balance, in our budgets, in our town expectancies. This is just to show you, over time, where our Chapter 70 funds have really gone up and down and how they reflected throughout the years. And we're looking at, well, FY13, we're looking at a level funded budget is what we're looking at in regards to Chapter 70. For the Chapter 70, how much reimbursement we're getting. This is how we've based our budget. Did that skip twice? I don't know why I'm doing that for you. This is not my computer, so it's probably more sensitive. Trying to begin? There we go. This slide here shows us our net school choice. Now, what you have to think about is school choice as two different programs. Your school choice sending and your school choice receiving. What we're looking at in our budget is our school choice receiving is what we look at within our budget. So if you look at over the course of a few years, what we have in FY12 is 83.12 students. So if we say 83 students as receiving, 35 students as sending. For FY13, it's 82 students receiving and 35 students sending. In our categories, it's always important in administration as well as our community and finance committees, as well as educators, to know where does our funding sources actually go within this course of the budget. So when we look at the costs, 4% is at administration. 49% is our instructional services. 8% is other school services. 5% in our operations and maintenance. We have 13% in our fixed charges. In our acquisition, we actually had 0% of our budget. And tuitions in other school districts is 21%. District and tuition in other school districts, those are for our out-of-district placements. I think if I just touch it, it's moving. So next, I want to look at our school expense increases. The major cause of our expense increase for our regional budget for this year is our staffing. And that is because we are changing our regional agreement from grade 7 through 12 to grade 6 through 12. The other piece is that in the town budgets, benefits are not put into the town budget for our school budget. They're in the actual town. So at the region, when we look at our staffing, we also have to look at the increase of our benefits. It's also in our regional budget. If they're not in the town budget. So when you see a large increase when you have staffing, that's going to be including in our benefits package as well. So we're looking for teachers in the following places for next year. Math, science, social studies, and world language. A .5 technology teacher. A .5 art teacher. Family consumer science should have been a separate line. Full-time family consumer science teacher. Two special education teachers. One paraprofessional. A .5 custodian. .5 curriculum director. It's actually a full-time curriculum director position. But .5 of that person's salary comes out of the region. .25 in each of the elementary schools. And then .1 is a special education coordinator. We have a special education coordinator, but we have to increase that position by .1, which is an increase of half of one day a week. And that's because we have an additional grade coming in next year. So we have to make sure we have enough services for that class. And also .2 for board certified behavior analysts, which is equivalent of one day a week for behavior analysts to come into the district. Some people look a little confused by the .5 curriculum director and how that split. All of central office, and all staff that are shared amongst all three districts, that is how our salaries are distributed. .5 is the region because it's two schools. It's a middle school and a high school. And then you have each of the other schools. So if you look at each school, it's .25 of each school, if you think of it that way. The school expense increase, also, we have team leaders next year. And our middle school developing a team model for the middle school. They need to have their leaders. So it's actually a stipend position for the team leaders that we don't currently have. Transportation, we're looking at a 2% increase. Utility services, a 15% increase. Of course, your insurance benefits, which I just discussed, all of those staff members are, you know, you have to consider if they were to have benefits. What we are proposing in our budgets, in all three budgets actually is, and for the region specifically, is in regards to the benefits since we do not know which staff members or who we will hire for those particular positions. We have put into the budget that they would be receiving the family benefit package. So it might have some staff members that might not receive any or might only receive individual benefits. So in our budget, we are preparing for family benefits package. And we won't know that until later on in the year or maybe even in the middle of the summer in some instances. And then you have your out-of-district placements as an increase of 30%. When you look at your decrease of cost in this particular region, so I just told you the out-of-district placement was an increase of 30%, and now showing a decrease of the out-of-district placements as 12%. So what does that mean? Out-of-district placements are in different categories and different line items. So in our collaborative, we have less kids going to the Essa Valley Collaborative Programs or any collaboratives that we may have them go attend. But we have an increase in more of the private out-of-district placements. Maintenance of building, decrease expenditure of 30%. Heating of the building, 30%. And that's because next year, we'll only be paying for one building. This year, we've had to pay for both the old Tohonto and the new Tohonto for a couple of months. So next year, we'll only be looking at one building. And then instructional technology. Well, we have a lot of great technology here now that we are in our new building. So we're not in need of as much technology that we have previously in our previous budgets. Also, the cost savings is transferring staff out of grants and into the general budget. I thought this was really important to mention. Some of the things that we've done strategically is in our current grants, we had staff members, teachers in our current grants. By taking the teachers out of the grants and putting them into our general budget and being able to use the grants for actual supplies and materials and curriculum components that we may need to purchase, you actually are saving, and I put 9% there, it's of their salary, because you actually end up paying those, the MTRS, you actually end up paying that twice. So actually, any staff member that we had in the grant, we actually ended up bringing this money by taking them out of the grant. This is looking at your four-year budget comparison. And this is really, to me, not a true analysis because we have to look at if this was just going to stay the seventh grade again, where are we? But because we have a new regional agreement, it's quite a different jump. And again, it's not really an apple-to-apple document. But what I wanted to show you is that what was voted by the school committee previously was $7.8 million. And what I'm bringing to the school committee for this evening is a $7.6 million budget. And we'll go through that process in a bit. So if we look at the current district needs that are addressed in our FY14 budget and hopefully beyond, what we're looking at is the administrative staff, which I talked to you about, the curriculum director. It's very important. For the last three years, we have not had a curriculum director in Berlin-Boylston. And with all the changes that have happened in the Department of Education, with state mandates, it's very important that we actually have a curriculum director to help keeping us in alignment with those changes from the standards that are, this past year has been ELA in mathematics. Next year, it'll be science. And the following year is social studies. And we also have to look at our related arts. And it was funny, I talked to a teacher the other day. He was telling me that for 20 years, we've been trying to look for new curriculum for social studies and science for 20 years. And we haven't really had somebody gearing us to where the needs to go. So teachers have had to do that independently on their own, looking for things and what they can do and what they can look for. So it's really important that we are supporting the teachers and actually steering everybody towards the same direction and working together. The other piece is the curriculum and instructional supplies. Again, looking at our ELA, math, science, and social studies. Those are all the different types of curriculum that we're looking at district-wide. And this year, we've been doing a lot of alignment vertically, looking at what we do in each grade level and how do they compare from grade to grade? And how do we get our middle school students prepared for high school? And how do we get our high school students prepared for college? And how do we get our elementary students prepared for that middle school transition? And how do we have it all working together in unison? So we've been focusing a lot on that. And that's really, this FY14 budget is really prepared to continue to support those gains and that progress. Also, as a technology plan, we need to keep our newly purchased equipment up to date. So it's great that we have all this new equipment. But we can't sit here and say, well, now we have the new equipment. We can sit back. We need to continuously be looking at it and reviving it and making sure that we are keeping everything up to date and actually have a plan in place of how we can support the technology that we have here. Our smart boards, our iPads, and Dino boards. We need to provide training to our staff. It's great that we have the supplies in our buildings and our classrooms. But now, we need to make sure that we're supporting our teachers in the technology that they're receiving. We also are going to be looking at a new student information system program. We're going to start using Power School in FY14 at the elementary levels. We have some teachers piloting the Power School. We currently have iPass. We're not going to be using iPass. We'll be using Power School. Teachers will need to be trained on that system as well. Professional development needs. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of these and explain to you, but these are state mandates. Most of these are state mandates. They're not even our own initiatives. Many districts are dealing with the same situation that we're stuck with doing state mandates first. So one of them is the new educator evaluation system. I have started doing the training with the staff members on the new education system to give folks an idea of what that system might entail. In their current contracts, they're anywhere from a paragraph to a paragraph and a half in their contracts. It's now adding an additional 26 pages to their contract on average. Shows you the extensiveness and how much in-depth that educator evaluation system is and how much training we need to do. I've done an overview. The state requires that we do four hours of training on the entire process. Well, to take 26 pages of that contract and to go over it in only four hours is quite intense. So they've actually already had about 10 hours of that process. But now, once they start implementing next year, we need to keep providing that training to support them to make sure they're actually understanding the process. And we, as administrators, are understanding that process. Also, the curriculum alignment. I've already spoken to you about that. And retail is another state mandate that all educators, administration, and teachers included. After 2016, if you need to get yourself recertified, which everybody has to get themselves recertified every five years, you will need to have completed a 48-hour course on retails. Because the state is mandating that, we need to support that. Which means the state is telling us we need to provide this type of training. They are going to tell us when the training is, when we're able to have the training. Because we're cohort three, FY15, is when we are going to have to support all of our teachers in doing the training. All the costs for subs, that means 48 hours. Well, that's a full week and a half. It's really six classes that they would be missing in the course of a year for each teacher. So we need to really think about what does that look like in our programs and in our classrooms. Again, it's a state mandate. It's out of our hands. It's what we have to do. Benchmark assessment systems is another system that we need to look in place. I'm starting to work on that with our assessment study group. I have members, teachers from each building that'll be working with me, as well as administrators, on what that benchmark assessment, what that means is we are assessing student growth at least three times a year. And what does that growth look like? And the reason why we have to look at those is that becomes part of their evaluation. Teachers will be evaluated on student growth on two measures. One is absolutely uncapped. And the other one has to be other measures that we've decided and agreed upon. It's a locally agreed upon. The 11 essential conditions of school effectiveness, again, is on the DOE website. That's another requirement that the state makes sure that we are following those 11 essential conditions of how to have an effective school system. And the student support team process, that is a federal mandate, making sure that we are following the appropriate interventions for students and teachers. Right now, each building does it very differently. So we have to have training for all of our staff to make sure that we're keeping it consistent. We're using the same language. We're using the same type of documentation. And we're showing the same growth. I just spoke to you about the new system. That's what we're doing because we need to make sure our system is up to date in what we're doing and reporting to the state on our EPOMs and our SIMs reported. Data analysis and changes of instruction, again, that's a best practice, but that's also tied to their evaluation. So we have to provide professional development for this. And another initiative that we want to do is the peer learning walkthroughs. So those are all different types of professional development opportunities that we need to provide our staff. Next is the curriculum, unmet needs curriculum director, which again, we're hoping to implement for FY14. Our middle school team leaders, it's part of our middle school model that we want to be adopting, that the school committee has approved. Another key factor is our education technology coach. We do not have one, and many districts do. And that's not a technician to come in to make sure your system's running right. It's not a coordinator to make sure that we have a plan in place. A technology coach is actually a person, is an educator, that actually will go in and work with the teachers on how to incorporate the technology they have in their classrooms with their students. And it actually guides and it changes the instructional infrastructure. And then the curriculum materials for students, we've actually started to already work on that. The curriculum coordinator, the curriculum team, specialist teams that we tried to develop this year, they've gone back to their buildings and their classrooms and they've come back with a proposal for the curriculum that they will need and where materials based on the new state standards and common core standards. And this actually, we've put into our budget for FY14. And we'll need to continue to keep that in our budgets in the upcoming years to support the other curriculums as well. So this is a comparison of what the school committee has previously voted on and what we'll be recommending at the end of their actual school committee during this evening. So if we look into Honto's budget, over here, what the school committee did vote. This has our current budget and our contractual salaries. This is the increase proposed based on contract as well as the proposal on what they currently have and what's going to be upon, is $124,000. Any other budget changes was $107,000. Staff changes, this is all the new staffing that I just spoke to you about, is $671,000. The $200,000 actually is our E and D. So it actually goes in both lines just because of the way that it's been set up here before. It counts as an increase and then it counts here as difference off of the revenue. And then, so the preliminary budget, what they agreed to was $7,801,181. The operating budget increase was $1,103,302. However, when you deducted the revenue of $200,000 from the E and D, it actually was $903,302, which was a 13.49% increase. Since that original vote that the school committee did, and working with Andy and I and the other administrators, what I looked at is the other budget changes. We found some other deductions out of the other budget changes, such as adding an additional $50,000 of the school choice. So we're actually going to be using 300. Am I correct, Andy? $300,000 on the school choice monies. Our health insurance, we had originally accounted for a 6%.
475.
Thank you, 475 on our school choice. And looking at our health insurance, we originally had a 6% increase of our health insurance when we found that our health insurance is actually going to be level funded. So we're able to take $27,000 out of there as well. We also looked at some of the staff changes. And we also, we have this at 641 instead of 671. And it's not that we have less of a person, that we reduced a .5 of a person, but this person was actually accounted for in two lines. So it was actually an accounting error. So we were able to bring that down. We kept the $200,000, but the preliminary budget will now be $7,628,462. Once you look at the final increase, we're looking at, instead of $903,302, we're looking at $730,583. Again, this increase is based on, first of all, a guesstimate of salary for all of those staff members as well as whether they've taken full family insurance and benefits. Can you see that?
Good.
I'm good. Next, I'm going to actually have Andy talk about the next two slides when we're talking about the FY14 assessment. This is the House proposal, which was the first of many versions we'll see on the assessment. So Andy, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Everybody get your magnifying glasses up. What we've done here, we presented two scenarios, the assessment calculation based on House 1. And then we did a, that we still don't know, a level funding from FY13, which will be the next slide. First of all, just so you know, the enrollment here is based on the foundation enrollment as of October 1, which the department of it has taken into consideration for moving up of the grade. So that's where we get the 206 for Berlin and 296 for Boylston, where last year, those numbers were 170 and 251 respectively. So what we did is this calculation just walks through the components of the assessment. So what we did is, this calculation just walks through the components of the assessment. You have the town minimum contribution, we took that from the, what was released. Chapter 78 here is based on the House One figure to get you the total of the net school spending. Then we looked at the budget, and FY14 is $7.6 million. Then you end up having to for DOE, DESE purposes. There are components of the budget for the region that are non-net school spending, that are outside of the foundation, and those are transportation and retired teachers' health insurance. So we separate those out, so you can see the calculation of the components to get to the foundation budget less state aid. And then this here are the funding sources that are used for offsetting the general fund, the E and D, the charter school reimbursements, Medicaid reimbursements, and the miscellaneous revenue. Those are, charter reimbursements comes off of the cherry sheet, and again, that was what we took from House One to get the subtotal of the funds of the 350, 336 for the general fund, and then we subtract the minimum contribution to get the 1.8 million, which is the amount over minimum. In the box, we have a calculation of the transportation and the non-net school spending, in terms of transportation, less the projected state reimbursement, and then the service employee benefits, that's the retired teacher health insurance, to get the part of the assessment that is non-net school spending related. And this is the final calculation of the minimum contribution for each community, the amount that's above the minimum, the amount of the assessment that's outside net school spending, and then the biggest amount, which is the total comparison of the FY14 to the FY13 assessment. For Berlin, if House One were going to stay true, we have a $2.2,524,549 FY14 assessment, and FY13's assessment is $2,223,800. That would be an increase of $290,749. And then for Boylston, that's $3,627,508 for FY14, FY13 assessment of $3,349,990, and that would be an increase of $277,518. So this is the one that we are dubbed, if you will, the state aid funding level, if you want to say the worst-case scenario. All the calculations stay true, Chapter 78, though we kept it at the FY13 level, not what was released in House One, and the same with the charter reimbursement, but all the other funding sources, we protected as the same, the transportation and the employee benefits stay the same, so to not bore you with all the other details. To get down to the FY14 assessment versus the FY13 assessment for Berlin, it would be $2,591,157 versus $2.2 million. That is a $357,357 increase, and Boylston's $3.3,723,216 versus $3,349,990. That's a $373,226 increase in the assessment. I went through that.
So worst case, Berlin is $357,000?
Yeah.
And Boylston is?
373.
373,000. That's the worst, that's keeping everything.
At 13,000.
One quick question. Dave, I'll look for the Boylston my answer. One thing you mentioned is when we're transitioning our sixth graders to the middle school, Boylston, I believe at the elementary school, I guess $1,100 per student, but Tohoto's going to receive $2,200. So when you're Chapter 70 level funding, are you adding that 50 grand in under Boylston? Boylston side?
Under the House One, or you mean?
Well.
The worst case, the worst case.
In either case, it's going to happen, because the kids are moving.
True, yes. So in the FY14, the House One has taken that into consideration already, based on the fact that they've moved.
No, I made the dip, but what I'm asking is, in this level state funding model here, have you added 50,000?
No, we haven't, no.
That's a guarantee.
I never want to say anything's a guarantee when dealing with the state. I know we've talked, you know, I would just, and my recommendation would be writing out a whole lot, until, just from what we're hearing, you know, quite honestly, when they're talking about it both House and Senate are buying with the governor's.
No, no, I don't. And this may be a realistic, don't get me wrong, I think you're smart to level, but I just, you think maybe I'm a little too safe not including that money for the kids that are transitioning to the middle school from the elementary school.
We understand, but when we did this, David, just so that you know, we also did this prior to the actual agreement being approved and set forth, so that's what we have here for tonight.
Okay.
But yes, I do agree. So if I, if we can just finish with this, and then we'll come up with any questions that people have, that would be great. So the overall, because we're looking at just the region, and we felt that the towns really needed to see the overall impact this has, the bottom line in regards to the budget, because even though the Tohoto budget has increased significantly, the elementary budgets have decreased significantly. So what I'd like to do is, I'm going to show you Boylston's right now, and actually, this is a little bit different than even what Boylston School Committee has already voted to approve, and that's because we were looking at a 60-40 split, Boylston having a 60% of the Tohoto's budget, and Berlin having 40% of the Tohoto's budget. However, with the state coming forward and telling us, you know, where they saw the numbers being 59% for Boylston and 41% being for Berlin, that's what we're proposing here right now. Okay? So with a 40% of Boylston, looking at the regional budget, which is the newly proposed that I'll be bringing forward to school committee later, with $730,583, at 59% of that, it's an increase for Boylston at $431,000. Okay? You look at the elementary school, having a decrease of $314,500, I'm just rounding. The Boylston health insurance, this is on the town side, has a decrease of $45,349. And their unemployment, again, this is the worst-case scenario at $67,500. That is because we're looking at all the changes that need to happen. At Boylston Elementary School, we're saying if everybody were not able to transfer up to the middle school. Okay, so we had, again, this is on the safe, the safe round. We're looking at a projected increase for the town of Boylston at $138,661. And Berlin's side, currently, this next week, we'll go forward to, on April 9, we'll go forward to Berlin for their official budget to be approved at 41%. It's April 9. Yes. Chris is rallying to me, I think it's not the 12, I think it's 12, right? No, it's a 9. So again, this all stays the same up here, except with Berlin at 41% of the Tohoto increase is $299,538. Berlin Elementary School budget change, with the staffing changes, is $139,159,000. Looking at their health insurance, we're looking at $30,668. And their unemployment, again, worst-case scenario, is at $46,000, with a projected increase for the town of Berlin at $155,417. And I believe our original increase for Berlin that we have currently approved is a $208,000. So we're at $155,000. Okay, we'll get to you in one minute. Let's just finish this first, and then we'll go back. And that's it. So I just want to thank everybody, and now I will take any questions, and I think, Lori, right? Okay, good. So Lori, I knew you had a question earlier.
I did, actually. It was just, when you look at how difficult it is to compare apples and oranges because of the shift of the grade, is there a reason that you don't like to present information in terms of per pupil? And would that help people understand the real change?
Our per pupil, by looking at the per pupil coming up in Tohoto for next year, and looking at our general funds account, we were at, I believe, $15,500, somewhere around there, which is roughly about the same per pupil that we currently have. So we did do that, we just don't present it that way, but yes, we did already do that research on it, so thank you. Okay. Yes, I know you had a question.
Yeah, the increase for Berlin on the Tohoto budget, you came up with $299,000.
So let me go back to that one? You're talking about that last slide that I just did?
Right. Okay, but if you take the actual change from the FY13 budget to FY14, it's $359,000, $60,000 more on the previous line.
You're looking at this one?
Yep. So I got small, but the $2,000 minus $1,157 minus $2,238,000 is over $250,000.
Any more?
If I may. The last slide talks strictly budget to budget. This here is the assessment, which is a different component of how it is that you're funding the budget, so I understand the confusion, but this here is, when you're voting, you're voting the assessment, per se, but the other thing was to show overall the components of the budget, showing the elementary school budgets, and then the actual impact I like to have.
Again, the history of FY13, you're asking $350,000, you're asking the taxpayers of Berlin for is an increase. On the next slide, that line that says, the amount you're asking is an increase, only says $290,000.
The increase was the increase of the budget dollar increase, is what we're saying is the increase. We weren't looking at the assessment increase, and that's what Andy was explaining here, the assessment increase, but then I was also showing the budgetary increase. Just looking at.
Kathy? I have a separate question. Could you speak a little bit to the Family and Consumer Science?
You must be here.
And the two special ed teacher increases as well?
Sure. So currently, in our middle school, we have, well, actually, in the middle school and high school, we have two special ed teachers in grade seven through 12. We're also bringing up the sixth grade next year, and so we actually are looking at our staffing this year, and how we can help support our staffing this year for next year. And so we're bringing in two special ed teachers. What we're eliminating in the elementary schools, sorry, what we're eliminating in the elementary schools actually is a .5 special ed teacher in each building, but we're also decreasing two and a half paraprofessionals. So those individuals aren't coming up into this building, but what we're looking at instead is restructuring it and actually having certified licensed teachers coming in, instead working more of a co-teaching type model, and working with our classroom teachers and disciplinary teachers. So it's a little bit of a strategy we've done, and what we've done is we're also bringing up one paraprofessional. So it's a way of taking, in other words, instead of bringing in four paraprofessionals, we're bringing in, and instead of bringing in one special ed teacher, right, .5 in each building, instead of bringing up one special ed teacher and four pairs, what we're looking at is bringing in two special ed teachers and one para. So we have licensed certified special ed teachers working with the students in the classrooms.
Okay. And the Family and Consumer side?
Yep. Diane, do you want to talk about the middle school and the Family and Consumer side?
Sure. Several years ago, we had a Family and Consumer Science full-time teacher, and with a maternity leave, and then she decided not to come back. That position was never filled, and it's, since then, has really been a piecemeal of several different teachers. With the new middle school model, we can no longer utilize a current middle school teacher who also teaches two sections of Family and Consumer Science, as well as a high school teacher who teaches not only in the humanities, but she's also teaching several, two Family and Consumer Science courses. She's also an ESL teacher, and with an increase in the ESL projected population, we need to have that person in the ESL as well. And with the increase in the sixth grade and state mandates for health education, we need to, Family and Consumer Science and health education falls under the same certification. So we'll be shifting the health classes from physical education teachers to some of those sections also for the full-time Family and Consumer Science teacher as well.
Any other questions?
It's not a question, really. If we could go back, I'd like to sort of clarify the questions regarding the assessment versus the budget.
Okay. Is this slide okay?
The, actually, the one that shows the Boylston and Berlin, you know, the increase is in the, yes. So what I just did while we were talking is taking the actual increase or decrease in the elementary school proposals for each, actually, probably the other slide would be best. If you remember, let me talk it through. The actual increase in the Boylston Elementary School budget was actually a decrease of When you apply the increase in the assessment, in the worst-case scenario, the increase was 373,226, so applying the 373,226 increase to the assessment for Boylston to the 292 decrease, you get an overall increase for Boylston of $80,843. Doing that same analysis so that you see the impact of the assessment piece for the town of Berlin, when you're talking Berlin Memorial and their share of Tohoto, the decrease for Berlin was 144,122. You apply that to the 357,356 increase, you get an overall increase for Berlin of $213,235. So that, if you want to know the impact for, on Berlin and the town, it's an overall increase of $213 for Berlin and an overall increase of $80,843 for Boylston. That's close. Sorry, please?
No, thank you. Clarified that question, and I'm sure I was, I'm probably still sitting there wondering what exactly you're talking about, but I know I am sometimes. Any other questions? One Ellen?
Hi. I noticed on the, the school expense increase slide, I did not see an increase there. I do see some, like we discussed, the art of Family and Consumer Science and technology, but I don't see one for the music, and I was hoping that you could speak to that a little bit.
Sure. Actually, Diane, do you want to talk about your music department?
Currently, the music department, contractually are scheduled, our teachers are scheduled to teach five courses per teacher. Currently, they are only teaching four out of those periods, so one period is available to be able to, to teach another section, and that would be the sixth grade music for students in the sixth grade. The increase with the band chorus, as far as the middle school model is concerned, it has been decided that the sixth grade would be separated and banned in chorus, and so that, on one of the periods of the day, they can have a separate sixth grade band and chorus, and then the opposite period, seven of that day, would be a combined seventh and eighth grade that we, similar to what we have now. That would allow the seventh and eighth grade, that would allow having them on opposite days, the instrumental lessons to still be scheduled, if we schedule both the chorus and the band, teachers teaching at the same time, to be able to do pull-out within the actual band and chorus, band program. Where currently, students now who take instrumental, small group lessons are actually taken out of a different elective, making it very difficult for not only the students, but also the faculty members of the other disciplines to be able to continue on with. with their curriculum, and they're missing a certain number of students, um, because of those lessons.
So I have a follow-up to that. You mentioned that the sixth grade is going to have a separate band and chorus, but you didn't say jazz band? Is that...
Jazz band, um, according to Mr. Kane, is going to be, um, an audition type of program for the middle school students. Um, students will just be able to sign up for it, there will be an audition.
But that will be during school day nine, after school, like, that is what they're...
No, and it's currently right now scheduled into the regular, regular day, yes, that will continue. Yeah, that will continue.
Can you explain about the art teacher?
Currently, we only have, um, one full-time art teacher, grade seven through twelve. One teacher servicing all of, um, all of the students, grade seven through twelve. Obviously, with the addition of the sixth grade as well, um, currently, um, art is one of our most popular elective programs, uh, not only for the eighth grade where it is an elective, but also for, um, the high school. Our numbers, um, there is no way, we currently have a middle school teacher, um, who's teaching two sections of seventh grade art, um, and because of the middle school model, she then cannot, um, teach the middle school art next year, um, so we are asking for a point five middle school art teacher to take over those other sections as well as, um, the addition of, um, a possible sixth grade elective.
Well, thank you very much, and as always, if you have any questions about the budget or anything else, please feel free to give me a call or email me, and I have an open door policy, so I look forward to hearing any good questions, so.
Just quickly before I close the hearing, thank you very much for the outstanding presentation. I know this presentation is on the superintendent's corner section of our website, so if anyone wants to look at it or review it, there's a place for you to, um, download and, um, here and review the, um, presentation. So Karen, any further questions? I'm going to call, um, close the hearing, public hearing section of this meeting.
To close the public hearing.
Can I just ask a suggestion and a question? Is it possible to post, um, the, um, the budget online, the itemized budget? Anything that we have from packets are, are public documents, and so when it comes forward to the budget process, you and I are working on how we can, can get those types of things as part of my budget presentation. So when you go on to my presentation, we should be, we got attached there now, so it'll work out.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I believe, I know we've done in Boylston last year and what the region is the sort of level of budget detail that's published in the town meeting warrant. I know we had an asked Boylston meeting for that sort of level of detail to be presented publicly. I know we don't get it printed in the warrant, but to have that available, I think that's something we could provide that level of detail easily to be public and printed up for town meetings. So I heard a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Hi. Any others? Nope. Who's reporting that? Oh, Christine. Did we lose a member?
Yes.
Just quickly, I know we have Mr. Dr. Hammond here, but quickly, I'd like to introduce our new staff member. Give him an opportunity to... Turn it over to Diane.
It's, uh, it's my pleasure to, um, introduce Ken Tucker, who is, um, our interim assistant principal here, um, at Tohoto. Ken comes to us from the Nishoba Regional Civil District, he's retired, um, elementary principal, I believe retired in two thousand ten, is that correct? Elementary and middle, um, and he's also, um, the former Nishoba high school football coach, and I can, you know, I can honestly say it's been a pleasure, um, working with him. It sounds like you're leaving, but you're not leaving. It's a pleasure working with him. Um, he has, um, given us, you know, um, obviously his vast knowledge, stability, professionalism, um, and I know that the, um, the staff and the students and myself, um, certainly appreciate, um, what he has done with us and for us so far.
Joy Disen.
Happy to be here, and, um, you know, it's been, it's been great so far. I enjoy the kids and the staff, you know, Diane and Amy and all, and, uh, it's, uh, been a pleasure to get back into it, so. Thank you for the opportunity.
I would just like to say that I actually enjoyed working with, with Ken again. Ken and I worked together at Nishoba, uh, years ago, and, um, it's good to be working with somebody that's familiar with each other's instructional styles, and it's been really great to work with Ken, so I'm glad to have him. What else?
Just as a closing comment, I was really impressed with your win-loss record as a football coach. Fortunately, we do not have a football team here, so maybe embrace our soccer.
Currently, the longest one in the state.
Welcome. In the next order of business, we have a presentation from Dr. Steve Hammond, who is from the Mass Association of Regional Schools Committee.
Well, that actually is Mass Association of Regional Schools.
Schools!
Let Coach Ramey do it like that, so. Um, thank you for having me.
You have been long awaited, Freddie, from our meeting, so you are eagerly awaiting.
Sure. Well, first of all, I'm very glad to be here, and to have the executive director of the Mass Association of Regional Schools, of which your region is a member. Just a little bit about me, I am a retired school superintendent, I was superintendent for Narikansett from two thousand, two thousand and eight, I retired then and became executive director. Prior to that, I was in Delaware, I was a business manager, assistant superintendent, and prior to that, I was in Vermont for five years, I was a district principal, and then a business manager, and then I taught in Delaware in nineteen seventy-one to eighty, so my career's been in education. I hold a doctorate from UMass Lowell, a MBA from University of Vermont, a master's in education from Boston University, an undergrad from Florida Southern College, and I spent nineteen sixty, six to seventy in Southland, it was a great time, I'll meet you there. I enjoy it. So I've been asked today to come talk to you a little bit about, uh, regionalization. Um, currently, my, our organization, we do have a consulting group, uh, that we are working with some districts right now on regionalization and issues that come up, but I'm going to want to go back and talk a little bit about, make sure we're all in the same field, playing field, we understand what you are here, where you are today. And so right now, your organization, you're two towns, you're a regional school district, you're going to be six through twelve, you're a school department, Berlin, K five, and a school department, uh, Boylston, uh, K five, now that's when you start in July one, uh, this year, which you'll be, so you're thinking. So what is it, your separate legal entities, your regional school district, Berlin, and Boylston, so separate, three separate legal entities, and we all know that. So what happens is you have separate budgets, you have separate required reports, you have separate collective bargaining contracts. How many collective bargaining contracts do you have between...
Three.
Three for the, all three, I mean?
Yes.
Each, each, each district has three, so you have nine collective bargaining agreements?
We have three total, one of each.
One of each? So you have to negotiate three different contracts, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And what, you have three, three teacher contracts?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
What about, what about support staff?
They have, um, they have contracts with the United Union.
Okay, all right. But again, you have different issues that, when I was at Narikansett, we had one teacher contract and one United Food Workers contract, and, uh, we went together, so I only had to do two. Uh, you have separate policies that could be there, again, is they are legal, they might be similar, but they still have to be passed separately by each school committee, and you have separate school committee meetings, you have one for each of the towns in the region. Uh, when I was at Narikansett, we had, uh, one a month, except March, where we had three because of budget, uh, vote on the budget. So issues that we talked about is the business office doing things three times, uh, every report. Now, one of the things I'd like to give you, if you can take this, take that past down here, this is the, published from the Department of Education, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but it is the superintendent's checklist. It's about a hundred things that have to be done each year, so you're, yeah, okay, yeah, just so you have, I want to make sure everybody knows here today. Um, central office personnel, I understand, get three checks?
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, required reports, three sets, see the superintendent's checklist, so every report that is there is done three times. Uh, purchasing, three, for the central office, there are three purchase orders, buying items for the central office. And the sharing personnel between the region and elementary districts, and you've got issues of sharing personnel between elementary district, because you're all separate legal entities, how do you share those most effectively and appropriately? One of the things that is concerning, that they talk about is deficiency in the central office and how they're doing things, uh, three times and so forth, how can you make some of that easier? And you have multiple school committee meetings, three adjournments. How often does the elementaries meet?
Once a month.
Once in the region?
Twice.
Twice? So in other words, you have four school committee meetings a month?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sharing personnel, there are benefit issues, sometimes you can have between them, uh, who's, who has the benefits, what benefits, are they different, uh, that you've got here? So you do have those issues that you need to deal with. So what can you do? Well, one of the things, you look, how can you streamline the operations going for the current legal setup? You can take a look at beginning the investigation for regionalization, what can you do if you wanted to look at that? And apply for a grant next year to study how to improve your operation with educationally, operationally, financially. Now, I put it in that order, is that a lot of times when people look at, when you want to form a region or you want to do something, is they tend to look at the financially as opposed to take a look at educationally, where are your personnel going to spend their time? Can you educate your students, uh, and use your money more wisely? How can you operate more efficiently? Uh, one of the things is that you want to have, and your superintendent talked about coming up now, that all the requirements for the Department of Education, uh, spending your time on that and doing it three times, or can you do it one time? And then finally, financially, you want to make sure that things are operating as most efficiently and effectively, you can use your dollars. And one of the things is, Andy, like I was putting forward, and they were talking about chapter seventy, next week, the House will come out with their budget sometime in the middle of the week, I think, if you heard any of the date, any somewhere in that, which already creates a real problem to figure out, well, how much money, especially in the region, because you live and die with the, uh, coming in with the minimum contributions and also chapter seventy. So what can you do now? Central office operations. Uh, you could take a look at the possibility, and again, one of the issues that we're coming up with, and we're trying to be working with the state, is that if, if there's not, in municipal operations, you have to have a law that allows you to do it. It's not, in fact, there's no law, it says, oh, I'll just go do it, no, you have to have a law that allows that. And trying to take a look at, we're trying to get a law through, we got it through the House, and we're talking about that region could become a fiscal agent, and they could operate differently, working with the towns, we still going to want to do some finessing of that. Uh, however, you could do some things if you wanted to try to think about it, thinking outside the box with different things, is that your central office, you could have, your central office people are employees of the region, am I correct? Are they employees of the region?
Yep.
Okay. So they're employees of the region, you have a budget for them, for the region, for the central office. You have a budget for Tohoto, for the operation of the middle school, high school. You then could have this, three school committees could set up an inter-office, intermissionable agreement, and saying, okay, this is what the operation is, and then we're going to build the region and build each of the towns, and the money comes in, and then get one check, one purchase order and so forth, you could take a look at that. Now, you have to take a look at all, but you talk to council, make sure everything's over, but that's something would alleviate some of your things, maybe at central office that you could operate with. You have to take a look at that. The other thing is shared personnel, in that case, is sometimes, and comes in with personnel that you, effectively, uh, that, and I have example that I had, is that I had, I had one art teacher, and she at the elementary level, and she would go to Phillipsden for one day, and Templeton maybe three or four days, didn't matter how many days where she was, if we were one region. In your case, if you want to share between the elementaries, you've got a problem because they're two separate legal entities, sort of reunions and everything else. So how can you share some personnel? I mean, one way you could do is, again, is one person becomes an employee of one of the towns, and then you have an intermissionable agreement with the other town, and you're sharing that way. It's a little awkward sometimes with the union contract, but if, if people trying to think, how can you make it better and not more difficult? And again, also, people, when they're coming in on shared personnel, benefit structure, how do you work those things out, so that you can work those things, so people, uh, especially health insurance is a big thing these days, so they can be covered. So again, trying to look at, how can you do some intermissionable agreements with the two towns and working through that, and everybody cooperating from not only the school committees, but selectmen, FinCom, and understanding what you're trying to do. And the other thing is school committee meetings, how can you schedule? That's something you have to take a look at, as efficiently, effectively as you can, so that less nights out and so forth. I can tell you, it is a big thing preparing a school committee, uh, agenda and materials and everything else, a burden on the central office. I had it once a month. Now, when I first went to Narikansett, uh, they were in very deep financial trouble, and we were meeting every week because we're trying to get things, what our problems were, and after we, the override did pass, I was there for three months, and we got seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollar pass, and the chairman said, we're going once a month, and I didn't know, I don't know if I could do that, and he said, we're going once a month. Well, I'd never go back to anything else. What we, we needed was once a month, and kind of worked very well. We'd meet the third Wednesday of the month, and the first Wednesday, we would have, if we had any subcommittee meetings, that we would do. But trying to schedule it, so, and I'd be very honest with the school committee members, try to be as cognizant as you can of your central office people, how many nights they're out, and how many multiple nights they're out, and what you're trying to do, if you can do, anything you can do to make it easy for them. Um, one of the things that we did, it, uh, that we had under contract with the Department of Education, is that, uh, before he, before this, there was no process by which you could form a region or expand a region, or what's the process that you do? And we wrote, we wrote a manual, which is now published, we have, uh, Department of Education, we've done the contract to them, and we went through and set up the process that you want to look at regionalization. And one of the other things is the Department of Education has a grant, and what they've done is they have money, um, like, uh, Braylock, and we're working some work, we're working out there with them, and Bryce, somebody you, secondary, two elementaries, they're looking to see what they can do, and the department gave a fifty thousand dollar grant to hire people to study that, which we're working with them on. So that you can take a look at, what do you want to do? Do you want, how do you want to change things, uh, make it a little more efficient and effective? And they can give you that. You don't have to do anything, you take the money, you're not committed, they want people, they, schools to look at, how can they operate more efficiently? Currently, you, what you would be, you'd be looking at is, uh, you would be like, uh, follow four, a region that contains secondary and elementary regions and unions, which you have. And so you might be wanting to move to a one at K twelve or something of that nature, but again, you take a look at all of those aspects that you want to look at. We've developed is a flow chart that goes through what you need to do through the process, there are legal requirements, and as you well know, the Department of Education, the commissioner has to approve any amendments to regional agreements, have to be approved, and we also set up is the process that we have here, and you start with preliminary discussions, and you're in this area right here. What do you want to, what do you want to look at? One of the things that happens is people take a look at, what's the advantages, what's the challenges, and take a look in making the changes. Um, one that I want to give out to you here, and if you could pass that down, and we can get some out to the people there, um, the, this is two things that we have here, if you, if you can give those out? Can I have one of those, just so I can have a little show? We developed, and we're working with the department, is, uh, two sheets, one is talking about the preliminary discussions, advantages to regionalization, advantages to looking how to organize differently, and the other one that we have is the challenges, and there are definitely challenges to making changes, that people want to make changes. Um, if you want to move forward and want to make some changes, Pete, let me give and take you how you want to do it. Uh, one of the concerns that people talk about is local control, and how can you do that, and they still have the control that you want, uh, and again, be of input. So what you need to do is you talk about discussions and whether you want to consider it or not, um, and really study it, talk to people. In fact, tomorrow, uh, we're going out on our contract we have with Mark Braylock, and doing informational meetings with people, they're going to get these documents and saying, what do you think? What do you, what do you want to see happen? And so this is what a suggestion is, you want, you've got short-term issues, you've got the long term. Short term is, how can you make your operation more efficiently and effectively based the way you're set up now? What can you do? What have been identified as some of your problems over the years, uh, what can you do to make it easy for them? Uh, then the long term, what do you want to do long term? I would tell you, which is interesting, is, um, the paradigm is shifting, and how can you support, you have the, uh, sustainability of a region and stuff, and towns and so forth to take a look at, and we've got some home calls and sending in information. So again, you need to look at what's happening to you, what's going to take place, um, and looking at different options that you might want to do, uh, that'll come about so that you can operate a much better or more efficient system. One of the things I'll be upfront with you, I'll be careful you'll wear your people up in your central office, and your people starting superintendent on down, uh, you can wear them up with so many meetings. And also, in the future, I'll be very upfront with you, that are places that, you know, when you want to attract people in the future, um, how, who would want to come in and know how many meetings, how many things they're going to do, as opposed to, all right, when I went in, I had one school committee and, and one budget I had to handle and so forth. So you want to take with all of those options, all of those things to take a look at. Um, some people say we don't want to do that, strongly suggest you can investigate, find out. Does mean you have to do it, and also the Department of Education will give you some assistance, and if you look for money, if they have, put it in the next year budget, I think they're going to... I think they're going to put money in. And the processes there that you can go through and what you can develop with it. So I wanted to give these out to you so everybody can see them. This is what we've come up with. Some of these are real, some of them are perceptions people have. Depending what's your situation, it's yours is a little different than some places where two towns are joining, one of the fears they have, they're going to close my elementary school or they're going to make my kids travel all these distances. And those things you have to look at and see in what you're going to do, what's going to be the best in the end result. I always say the kids don't vote, the people, the adults vote. So you want to try to do what you best you can for children and that's what we're talking about, education. So I've been glad to talk a little bit about this and what your thoughts are. I think it's to come out with that if you want to take a look at this or if you want me some time to look it over and come back. But I think you have an opportunity, you can make some changes on your structure now to make some things a little easier, a little more efficient for people. And it's up to you what you want to do. There is some mechanisms there. You'd have to strongly deal with your council, the council to make sure everything is appropriate. School committees can make intermissionable agreements with each other, but you also have to work with your selectmen, FINCOM so everybody knows it's transparent what's going on, what you're trying to do. And I don't think it'll cost you any more money, it can just be more efficient operation. It's where you want your people to spend their time. And I often say, you've got so much coming from that, your superintendent put up on that thing about all this stuff coming down from the Department of Education, it's just unbelievable what's coming down. So where do you want them spending their time? So that's what you really need is that. I was starting, and cheer director having discussions and comments.
I have some questions for you right off the deck. So with the intermunicipal agreements, it can be done through the school committee and doesn't have to be initiated by the municipal because the school in the, in our elementary districts, those employees are municipal employees, not school employees?
Well, they are municipal, but they're under the control of the school committee.
Okay. So that can be originated at the school committee alone?
But I also, they originate, but I also said you work with your selectmen, FINCOM, do everything.
We have, we have several members of our FINCOM, so they may not be split here, but um.
Berlin's.
Yes, thank you. But that, that can be originated to the school committee.
School committees can discuss that and you can make agreements. And again, it's a process, you got to go through and make sure everybody, and it's not going to cost you, obviously you make it so it doesn't cost you any more money. I mean, you want to make more efficient operation, that you can do. Hopefully, I mean, it should not, that's not the intent of it.
Because you know, typically right now, if we have a split employee, we try to structure it so that the employee gets the benefits by working sufficient number of hours at least at one district and that they can get their benefits at that district and then we'll work hours at the other district. So when they're split, you know, they, they can.
As long as, as long as whatever they meet that requirement, if they fall below that threshold, what is your threshold to get benefits?
You have to work point five.
Right. So if they drop down to point four, point four, say a point eight, there's where your problem comes and that's where you might want to think of intermissionable agreement to do that particular one. If you become fully regionalized, for regions, that's not an issue anymore.
Oh, yeah.
And it gives you a lot more flexibility in what you want to do. You got a question, sir?
So in general, I think each now is worried that they're going to lose something by regionalizing. So what's the solution to that in terms of helping people overcome that concern?
Part of it, what it is, is just what I handed out to you, so you take a look at those things and you say, what are you worried about losing? Okay? One of the things is they, we, I've worked with a school system that they were, the elementary level, they were worried about controlling that budget on their elementary level. And one of the things you could write into your agreement and you have already in place a school council, school councils can meet and they can, with the principal and members of the, members of the school committee and local people, it's really defined and who's on school council, they can prepare a budget, bring it to the school committee. You could write in the agreement that that will be part of the preliminary budget. It has to be there so it gets there so they know exactly what it is. And then there's the process, you see if it can go or not go, but they make sure that they, they're, they're, they heard what they want to see in their budget. So it'd be required that the school committee had to accept it, they would present it and they could do it that way. So you could actually see that. And the school council's already in place. Again, as the thing is fact, is remembering, you're saying, well, where do the school committee members come from? Well, they come from your towns. So they're your people, they will elect them and so that you want to elect the people that will do the right things for what you want. That's what, that's how some of that, you overcome that. The other thing is we talked to one of our districts we worked with was worried about closing a school. I don't think that's an issue here, but what we did is, you asked me some things. In the agreement it says, if they're going to close a school, they have to start a whole year ahead and form a study committee, present the information. They just can't, and the market committee said, we're going to close that meeting. Has to be a detailed process that has to take place before that can happen. And then if a town's not happy, they can vote the budget down, obviously. And you go through that process. And then, but both towns have it, they're not happy, they can vote it down and, you know, most cases is they want less money, but some cases they want more money. So, yes, sir?
How do you deal with debt, existing debt on school buildings?
Well, right now, you're talking elementary buildings, debt on, with the way, a lot of times it works is that the building is, the property owned by the town and the region has a lease.
Okay.
Then they put on, then there's a lot of places, they say, okay, for the operation of that building, is they put a threshold saying, where I was, if anything over five, one project over $5,000 was responsibility of the town. Boiler has to have $6,000, $8,000 worth of work, they have. Any normal maintenance, wear and tear responsibility of the region. But you can set that up any way you want.
Right.
Yes, ma'am?
You said there were some certain steps to making these intermunicipal agreements. Can you briefly tell us what those steps would be?
Well, first of all, you would, you would want to consult with your council, who's your council?
Um, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Williams, you'd want, who's your particular?
Elizabeth Valerio.
Okay. You'd want to sit with her and say, we want to do an intermunicipal agreement between our two school committees for this purpose and work with them to draw our, correct, correct. You'd also want to say to your lawyer, we want this to work. Sometimes lawyers will put things, say, we want this to work, what do we have to do to make this work? You also can get free advice from the Department of Education as well. Christine Lynch is one of the people you start with and also for the legal aspect as well, they can give you some help. I did mention that to her, she's the contact for regional schools and talked to her and she did, feels that you can do some of that. We're trying to get that into law so it could be a lot easier to do in that one so that you could do the intermunicipal agreements if you want to. And those are short-term. I mean, what do you want to do long-term is what you need to come up with. So, but I'd start with the council and say, here's what you want to do. And again, is everybody communicating, you know, you could set up a subcommittee to investigate that and put back to the full committee, that nature. So, okay, you have six members, so you could have two, one from each town working on that. Another job for you guys. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Who do you find typically drives regionalizations?
What drives it?
Yeah, it's usually start with the school committee or does it start from the town spokes or?
Well, we worked, we worked out in, we have a contract with Southwood, Tallon, Granville. And it was Granville, that was a K-8 and they tuitioned into Southwood. The selectmen were the driving force because they saw every year the budget was getting cut and they were not providing what they needed. So they felt that they wanted a regionalization. So that was selectmen. Other times, it can be what's driving, some of them is a building project. Somerset Berkeley was a building project and they, they were told, if you don't regionalize, school building, we're not going to give you the money because they both wanted to build a high school. And Somerset had taken Berkeley kids in for 25 years on a tuition basis. So there can all be different reasons why, what they, what they want to go for. A lot of it to think about is educationally and again, is how, what's your operation? How smoothly you're operating? And then you want to be able to attract employees in the future to come, that want to come here. I can tell you, if you, if I, and I'm experienced superintendent, I'd think twice before I'd want to get into this type of thing that you've had.
I think we've experienced.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know that.
I, I worked in Vermont as, I was in a supervisory union and there were, the reason I know, there were five elementaries, a region, a supervisory union, that's the way Vermont set up. It's, let me just tell you, I had to do five budgets, five elementary budgets, the element, the region and then supervisory, keep track of all it. The one thing they did is the supervisory budget was a one budget and then we hit, and then we assessed each of the towns to do that. So you, that's one of the things, if you could do, I think you could set up now with your central office and operate that more efficiently and effectively than you are now. When I tell people, I was coming out, that you get to get three paychecks, they always think, what? You know, yes?
Steve, in your experience, I mean, obviously it's not all about finance, but I'm curious if in most cases, does regionalization result in greater efficiencies, better financial situation? Is it given?
Everyone, you, generally, yes, but everything is different. You have to take a look at it. And I know some places you take, one of the things that can cause a problem, one of the districts did a study and what happened was is that the contracts, the teacher contracts were so far apart, trying to bring them together, or the health insurance was so far apart, which is really too bad, it was just so far, it was not to do that. So they could take some other steps in trying to work those things, but it just wasn't going to happen. Just so everybody knows is when you have, when two towns come together, teacher contracts and the law says they come together and then they had, then their new contract is negotiated. It's not automatically you go to the higher cell, it is negotiated. So it's not automatic. Sometimes people like to say that, but it's not, you negotiate that. Again, all those have become negotiable. And what happens is if you, in a regionalization situation, you decide, okay, what do you want to start? You say hypothetically, you want to start fully K-12 and you want to do it. Well, you wind up having to do, you start and say, okay, let's just say you were doing it next year, okay? So that you wanted, you went to town meetings, everybody voted July, in June, May, June of 2014. So July 1, you would have a six months to a year transition period. And then the following July 1, you'd be fully regionalized. And you have to go through a transition period is what you have to do. In your particular case, you have to bring your contracts together, the municipal aspects, I mean, the municipal to come into the region, there's a lot of things. I served as the interim superintendent in Somerset Berkeley for a year as they transitioned through the, become a region for them. So it takes a while to do that. You have to, if you're going to change your regionalization in this, what you have to do here is you have to notify the Department of Education on and before December 1st so they can build in the chapter 70, everything else for the next July 1. So you have that limitation. Yes, ma'am?
From a practical point of view, getting back to the intermunicipal agreements, what would be a reasonable expectation with the moderate amount of cooperation on to, from beginning to end of that process? Say we wanted to implement that, say we wanted to come up with an agreement, what would be a reasonable expectation?
How long to do it?
Yeah, a month, a year?
Yeah, sure, a month, couple of months.
Couple of months.
I'm sure if you check with your council, they, there are, I know out there, there are different ones that have been written up. It's not a complicated document and it's just, everybody agrees and it's right, a public document. You have to list like, say, you're going to have somebody who's going to be an employee, say they were point six to make point three and point three in either one, okay? They're not going to qualify for benefits, okay? So you make them at point six in one, at one town, okay? They become one town, they get the benefits. That town that they're full-time, that builds the other town for their salary, health insurance, workers' comp and unemployment, everything that you build in and then they build and they pay them. And they can get credit on their end year report for that. So that's not a problem, that gets accounted correctly on the end year reports.
Wonderful. And this wouldn't be something that affects seniority or?
Well, that's, the only thing you have to be careful about is, and you need to understand, and that's where you need to work with the unions to say, our unions, and I'll say this, you know, they're, they're to help their employees, their members and work with them and help protect them, is that you might have to deal with the fact that they were two different, they had two different seniority, they had seniority dates and something that you could work something out so that they maybe not lose that seniority and that, that gets frozen in that one town and then continues on the other one. I mean, you have to work those things through that. I would think the union would want to make sure things worked out well for their, for their, for their people too.
Thank you.
I would just say, just to feed off that, and the experiences here in Tejant, Berlin and Boylston is once a staff member is no longer employed in that particular district because they've gone to others, they do lose their seniority.
Now, that doesn't mean you can't sit down and negotiate with the unions to say, but this is what we're doing on a temporary or whatever basis to do that, but they'd be willing to work that out. And that's where you bring people to the table and say, here's the problem we got, how can we all solve this problem?
Exactly. And show that it's in the best interest of the staff and the students.
That I, yes, ma'am?
So following along those lines, you had said, when making the agreement, everyone agrees to whatever agreement you make, who is this everyone?
Well, first of all, the two school committees can make an agreement, but you want to make sure your selectmen, the finance commissions are on board with what you're doing. Because you don't want to go into a town meeting and say, what did you do? Everybody's on board, it's the best thing for everybody to do. So you want to bring them to the table as you're doing that and work. So, I mean, why would they not want to see what's best and it's going to be overall? The education for the children and you keep good employees and, I mean, let's face it, folks, right now, health insurance is one of the major, major things in Massachusetts requirement, you have health insurance. So you could lose people that aren't going to stay with you who are good people. So that's what you want to look out for. Otherwise, they pay 100% of the loan.
The town of Berlin does not have retiree health insurance and I believe both the region and Boylston do have it. So that would be an issue, a big issue for other people.
Well, at age 30, it's not an issue, age 60, it's an issue. So you're absolutely correct. So where they are on that process. And that's why if someone, you just said between the two towns, you might want to say they don't, they don't lose something. But again, if they, even if they're split between the two towns, I mean, would they qualify into one town if, if over 50%? Which one has the health, which one has retiree?
Berlin does not.
Berlin does not.
Yeah.
I don't mind, I'm kind of surprised that doesn't happen because they usually, most, I think most towns have that, you know, have health insurance for retirees, something.
We don't, we don't want the cost to go along with.
Yeah, I understand. No, you're right. You know, there's a cost to it. But it's also attractive to see how long employees want to stay with you, knowing that that's not there. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
So when you were talking about seniority, so if you pull the lady teachers' unions into one union and you regionalize, how typically, do typically people keep the seniority from their own unions when you do this and everybody agrees to that or?
Well, first of all, the law says that the person, let's just say the person cannot make any less money than they're making before regionalization, okay? So let's just say they're making $50,000, okay? When they're regionalized, they can't make less than 50, okay? Then you have to sit down and you negotiate that and come up with a contract that's going Then you have to sit down and negotiate that and come up with a contract that's going to work for everybody. And sometimes, it depends where the salary levels are, remember I said that can be a real problem? It depends, how close are they between, do you know?
Not close.
Not close?
Well, the starting goal, just to give you an example, between the two elementary schools, the starting salary is about $3,500 difference. But again, with Berlin, we've talked a lot that they're getting paid more because they're not getting their, their retirement. So that's how it's, it's different, because they're not getting direct return insurance.
Again, what you take a look at, you have to sit at the table and you figure out what to negotiate that over a period of time. I know Selkirk, Talon, Bramble, they've negotiated that and they've worked those things out. Some people, when they try to put a salary schedule together to weigh off, well, they, they kind of red circled them and say, okay, you're held harmless, you'll get that. When the salary schedule catches up to you, then you'll get an increase. But they won't take anything away from you. So there's a lot of different ways to solve it, if people are willing to solve. I mean, I'll be upfront with you, are willing to solve it and come up with what the best answers are.
Yeah, I mean, that, the health insurance issue, the retiree health insurance issues, I have to say probably the biggest sticking point between the two elementaries. I think if you look from Boylston Elementary after the Tohoto region, I think it's a cool, that would be easier merge because to think that two charts, salary charts are closer together. But I think the transition between the Berlin into Tohoto or into the collective would be a little trickier to do because they don't have that benefit.
Well, what would happen is if they, if you're not fully K-12, they become employees of the region. Therefore, therefore they would get it and it comes back as an assessment back to the towns. And one of the things that we did when I was at Somerset-Burkeley is that when the, those people, and that, the retirement was, health wasn't an issue, but at least to get a point here, is that as of June, when we, as of June 30th, if they were employees of Somerset or they're employees of Somerset went from a K-12, from a K-12 to a K-8 and a 912 region. So anybody that on the, on the Somerset side that retired on and before June 30th of the year that we formed the region, that was responsible, retired responsible of the town. After July 1, became responsibility of the region, no matter how many years where they spent, whatever, they became responsible, it's technical, that's where you can be responsible. Again, that was the easiest, cleanest way, everybody accepted that. So again, you have to take a look at that, you know, the region that they do. So that can solve some of your problems in the future for schools. Yes, ma'am?
Have you ever worked with any groups that have had two different teachers' unions? Our elementaries are, have the same union and our middle high school is a different one, I can never remember which is.
AHTA and MTA.
Oh, two different ones. That's interesting, no. Again, that would become an issue of who was going to be representation of them. And that's something that the employees get to decide to a certain extent, who they want to be representative of. And that, again, you have to show that it's beneficial to everybody to form a K-12 and you have to, you know, and to work it through. I mean, it just takes, it takes time, I mean, to bring those issues up. Now, has any, has there been any discussions about that before or just? Well, you bring to the forefront, say, here's what we want to try to do, if you want to do it. But again, the thing is, I would strongly suggest, as I said, some of the things you could do now, but when you're, when you take a look, we'll look at the budget when it comes out. And if they have money in there for the regionalization, that it's a grant, then apply for the grant and you can get information and do stuff and you can find out whether you can work it or not. And it doesn't cost you anything, it won't be, the department really wants to see those things happening, what's best. And you're not forced to do anything, by the way. You take the money in, you go through the process, if nothing happens, that's fine, you report, nothing happened. There is no obligation that you have to do it.
We received great money last fiscal year for our sixth grade regionalization project in Planning. And we were actually very grateful to receive that money and it is a tremendous boon for this stage of regionalization that we did. It helped us with our curriculum planning, it helped us with all of our organizations implementing this, this big project.
You now need to look at your organization's structure, what you want to do with that. And you also need, one of the things we, not that we're looking to get work, but we do recommend, you do need somebody facilitating with you. You can't dump it on your district superintendent, go through all of that or any of you. You also need someone to do your finances and outside, third party. And you also need a lawyer, obviously, if you have council, but to actually work the agreement and the legal aspects which you need to do. And also the contract, you know, concerning with, when you start to do it and transition with the unions do. I, we also recommend bringing them to the table so everybody knows what's going on. Yes, sir?
So, but there seems to be some, a shorter term needs and interests as well as some long-term planning type stuff. For those, the two paths, if we can just map out how we'd go about starting down future of that. On the shorter terms, I would be, we talked about inter-municipal. As opposed to agreements, perhaps some of our staff that would be cause of, you know, worries being cut down or having that issue where they aren't going to qualify for the benefits in either school. And so there's opportunities now with head down with that path. So looking at that and then longer-term planning, what are the first steps that we want to start taking now to start exploring this?
Short term?
Well, each side of the system.
Okay, well, short term, I would, I would suggest that you appoint a, one member from each, a school committee to start saying of the inter-municipal agreements. Now, like, and again, I think, do you all sit on both the region and the elementary?
Yes.
We do, but we don't have to.
You don't have to?
Right.
Do you, is that the case now?
Right now, we do.
Okay, so you have the opportunity, you have two hats.
Right.
And you can sit down and start that process. You could then also contact your, you know, fincon select information community, so you could invite them in, it's a public meeting, they have to set up a poster meeting and everything else and everything. And say, we'd like to do this, you understand, here's what we want to do. What's going to happen, they will vote the money and the budget, you're just now going to maneuver it a little differently, the same amount of money that you'd be given, that they go to town meeting to do that. And make sure, again, but also then contact your council to make sure, you know, that they feel that your charters or something doesn't say that you have to get some approval from the town meeting or say, can you do it? But you also want to bring your selectmen and sort of dayno and your fincom to do that. So I would recommend appointing them and you start that process. And what you really want to look at is your central office organization, I would think, how you operate that one. And then also the fact is, if you've got issues of shared personnel, I mean, those are the other two, those are two, you might correct, anything else at the moment? Okay, you're saying, no, nothing else?
No, nothing else.
Okay, those are the two things that you want to look at, okay? On the agreement, on the agreements that everybody agrees that you're going to, your central office is going to be a budget. Now, and you might correct, you could pull central office out and then you can divide that out and it comes in, they keep track of it separately in the, in your operations. And then in the end of year report, and you will then charge it back, they would get appropriately, recharge it to the town, they'd properly go to the bachelors. It can be under the 1,000 series, it could be under the contracted service, if they really want to spread it out, they could, either one. So that's not an issue when reporting, so. People are concerned is that, is the money going to show up in the region? No, it's going to show up, you divide up accordingly in the end of year report, that's where all the reporting comes from. When you're talking about per pupil, that's how to figure out how much per pupil you're spending in the way you're in the year reports. Then I would, then I would also then start that process, you might want two others to be appointed down the long range to monitor when that grant's coming out and then applying for that grant. I think, you know, just watch the budget. From what I understand, I think they've got this money in there, they've been, at least this governor's business, wanting to see it. It's under the A and F administration finance and then they transfer it over into the Department of Education.
Okay, so you mentioned earlier that there is a, a proposed bill to try and help make creative these, you know, to municipal create it easier. That's something it sounds like would be helpful, but is it something that we have to beat for?
We got, we got a bill through, but this is what kills me, I have to tell you. You filed the bill, okay, two years ago, we filed the bill. We went through it, let's see, this is the, okay, we filed the bill and in FY 12, and then into calendar year 12. Into FY, into calendar year 13, on the last day in December, it, the House passed it, went to the Senate and the Senate adjourned and didn't do it. So we're now back at level one and trying to figure that out to make it easier to do that in cases like this. So that your school committees don't have a right to do it as opposed to look through all this other stuff. But you still want to be upfront and everything else and working with everybody, so.
So actually, I had given it to the school committee at the last regional meeting. We talked about the legislation proposals and I had given it to you. But maybe you could explain just a little bit of what that bill actually is supposed to do, to see if it can work into this.
Well, and we're trying to say as you're fiscal, you become the fiscal agent. And again, that's becoming very confusing to us and we're going to have to really amend that, what we put in to change it, saying that, defining it that a, that setup like you are, and you're not the only ones, about five or six in the state, saying that the region could be, could then, whatever they, the central office or some other way you want to do it, or even share grants or whatever, helping run even grants or whatever, you could, you could run it through your books and the town wouldn't have to do it through their books and they could work that. And you could, you could have billing back and forth that you could do. So it becomes a right as opposed to having to sit down, but you could do that. And we still got, we got a lot, we got some work on it, every time you present something, other things come up, so we're trying to work all that through. But meanwhile, you could still do that, I think, to solve those two problems that you've got now, at least go with it. I don't see any, unless some lawyer tells me differently, I, we don't see anything that could do it. But, now, again, you go, that's why I'm suggesting, point, they want you to stop asking those questions to make sure that what you can do to solve your problems. If it's supposed to do with nothing, stay in the way you are.
Okay, so just so you understand this, with that, but there are other ways, it sounds like, we don't have the advantage of having that law in place.
No, you do not at the moment. So that's why, yeah, I'm sorry.
It, it sounds like for everybody, the shared staff, we could still look at, you know, having people employed in one town and then billing them out essentially to the other town. And that doesn't sound like that requires a lot of.
I don't think so, but again, is, one of the thoughts we had, you have the region do it, but that creates a, they become employees of the region. But unfortunately, you throw another contract into the middle of it, so that becomes a problem. Dr. Vary, you're going to have, what you'd have to do is when you want to share those, you're going to have to bring both the unions, is the same union, same union represented, whether one's AF?
At the two elementaries, it's, it's MTA.
It's MTA.
MTA?
And then at the, at the, at the two elementary districts is MTA, the region is AF.
Yeah, but they're two separate contracts or one?
Yes.
They're three separate contracts.
One in Burnmore, Boston, one in Tohoto. Well, you have to bring them to the table and say, how are we going to do that to protect the employees? So your superintendent said, if they have seniority, one in each of the split, that they don't lose that temporarily, what are you trying to work out in the long run? So, I mean, you got to protect your employees, you know, that, that's the thing you got to work down, sit down and see what they say, I mean, what are you trying to do?
Well, I understand, sorry. You know, I understand that the, a region to become a fiscal agent, that part makes sense. A shorter term and I'm thinking that we have some specific cases that we have, I think, into the year that we have concerns about. If we have a short-term way to kind of have those employees part in one town and the budget validated, it doesn't sound like we have to have, you know, any others, whatever, having the unions involved in a conversation, having the towns understanding what we're trying to do. But I just think there's no ultimate budget impact, you know, it still ends up being.
You, you still have, if they're point, I'm just, I'm using the .3 just because they're not eligible, or .4, take your choice. They're not eligible in the town. Well, you're going to budget for that amount of time and so forth in that town. The issue becomes the health insurance, how are you going to handle that? So both towns will have to handle the health insurance, because if neither one's budgeting for it, then you got the budget for it. So you have to make sure that that's taken care of. And that's been an issue, I understand, a little bit, some people, so that you have to make sure that takes care of.
One of the particular cases, where the, the, the thing of all those employees currently have insurance and they get, like towns aren't paying for it already. So we aren't talking about any increase to anyone, so you ought to be a little bit more straightforward. Sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm trying to process all of this because I'm, I'm looking at all of this firsthand. But my question is, so what you're saying is that if we have an individual that works .4 in one school, in one town, and .4 in another town, we should really make them .8 in one, but then build back to the other town so they can still get their insurance benefits? So then?
That's an idea, that's, that's a concept that you, and you can explore to help solve your issue.
So then, if that's the case, then we would let the town know that that employee is really only .4 and they would bill back the insurance portion and the salary back to the other town, so the town there, because they actually get the new checks from the town, is that what you're saying?
But they still get, they get a check from one town and you do a billing. But I mean, you bill everything that that employee, the salary, the health insurance, workers' comp, which they be, you know, .4, you still have to put workers' comp, unemployment, all of that in. As long as the health insurance was budgeted or had been budgeted, whatever, then you, then you bill them back appropriately for their, for their cost. What, you're kind of looking at it like?
Well, I'm just thinking of what kind of a logistical nightmare that could be for schools as well as for the towns of trying to keep it all together. No, David?
I don't think it would be a big deal. I mean, it'd just be subset of, it's still a good school, but it, it might have a little part, so the health insurance might not be, but I don't think it's, that wouldn't be a huge thing.
When I was in Norwood, we had some things in that the town accountant allowed to reimburse that account, that you were doing that, because you came in, you were, now, you got to be careful and work all those issues through. I don't think they can do that. That's where you bring up, here's the problem, let's solve it, not just create a problem for us that we don't need.
I don't think it'd be, is there, you have, are there situations where it might apply now to people?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
We actually, we actually have about three or four staff members that this is actually, could potentially impact for next year.
I don't, I mean, county wise, I don't think it's a big deal. You know, as long as, you know, council says it's okay, well, that's a, you know, it's got to run it by them.
Write that down, you got on camera.
Yeah, for the county.
Part of it, you tell your lawyers, we want to make this work, help us make it work, part of it, you tell your town accountants, and, and, we want to make this all work, so let's all work together. And now, let's not put up the road book, just make it all work, legally, I mean, legally.
I think the central office acting as a billiard is a good break. I mean, stop the three checks, stop, that's, that's, do that as soon as you can.
Because right now, your health insurance is governed by the region anyway.
Right.
But so, to, to, to take his point though, with the, and having with the central office, you know, under, upon, you know, accounting's a budget. That element, I understand, we need with the region to, would be a fiscal agent for?
Yeah, you're serving as wide out, you're serving as.
You can't do right now.
Well, you could do it because they're employees of the region. And you say they're employees of the region and you're going to bill the towns and appropriate county where they go in the town. So, and again, if somebody would say, like, and your point, all gets put back incorrectly, so they get credit on what their expenses are too. I mean, right now, you, you're supervised by the union, I believe hires a superintendent, am I correct? Now, what about all the other staff that's hired by the region?
Yes. So the 50, 25, 25 employees could do this?
Which is also a lot of staff.
Which is also a lot of staff. So we just talked about the, adding curriculum coordinator under that circumstance. And that would have landed that position.
So basically, all you do is, is it usually a system where there's a monthly invoice sent to the, at the account or quarterly or?
You can set it up however you want to set it up, whatever works to cash flow purposes, that works like that. And what, but basically, you can, depends how much detail you want to give them, or you can give them to everybody, you run a spreadsheet, you got it set up, it's going to be, it's very simple that you do. You bill when the money comes in. You know, I mean, it, it might be a small amount, you know, difference in surrounding issues that you get and unemployment and all that stuff. But again, it would fold into the region, when it folds into the region, it folds to both the towns, because the towns are the two other regions.
Steve, can I ask another question? Is there an apparent difference in Chapter 70 formula for regional district? I mean, what happens to, there's significant differences right now on a per pupil basis between Berlin and Boylston and Tohoto. What, does that all just get blended together or what happens in a full region?
Full region, it's all blended together, so you're one, you're one system. And then you, then you, then you build back by your assessment back to them. I mean, you, I believe, and you work statutory, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the statutory system says you take, on a region, okay, the, you get, get your budget. Through the October 1 numbers, you'll come up with, Chapter 70 is based on your total enrollment, not based on the towns. And then that Chapter 70 subtracted, you get, Chapter 71, which is regional transportation gets reduced. You saw where you're reducing your E and Ds using to reduce that, any other income. And then that difference is spread between the two communities. And then what you come up with the assessment, you take their minimum contributions, that has to be subtracted out from your budget as well. And then they add up what they're going to get, so. The easier one town will pay a little more, it depends how rich the town is, the minimum contribution is based on the wealth of the community. Two factors, one is your property, one is your income. That goes back to, just so that you know, and I teach this a little bit, as that goes back to 1993, the Reform Act of 93. And where this court's rule two, that, you know, that every child has to have, has an education. And if your town's, you can pay more, you can pay more for the education of your children. And there's a minimum foundation, so we know where every child lives, is there's a minimum amount that child's going to get toward their education.
So, but you brought up an important point there. One monetary advantage of regionalization is we would get reimbursement for our transportation that the elementary schools do not. So we get, oh, it's about 70, it's a little ranges, we don't know for sure, but 70 to 73.
Right now, right now, it'd be about 50% reimbursement, we're trying to move that.
Being optimistic, reimbursement for our regional transportation that we don't get at the elementary level. And then another advantage that I can presume, that just, that really irritates me, is that Berlin and the region are eligible for the world schools grant, which pays for technology, that are, that Boylston does not, is not eligible. It really irks me that, that Tohoto, which is in Boylston, is eligible for it, but Boylston itself is not.
Well, the region, everything is, for the educational, the LEA, local, is the region. So that's why I mean, the region qualifies.
Yes, so that would be a really nice benefit that then would reflect down also into the elementary schools. So there are some financial incentives.
Well, one of the things that's why you want to get, get the grant is if you hire, you take a look and you look at all of those, all of those things. And you come up with what the numbers are so people know. So when you go to town meetings, to vote, you've got the right numbers. And I will tell you, it's a process, because you've got to go out and talk to people at least three or four times for all public meetings and explain to them what the issues are so they all know. I know when I was at Somerset-Burkeley, we went out and every, every town meeting they went to, they voted 60, 70% were voting yes, they wanted to regionalize. And they knew it was going to cost them some money, but they wanted to, to regionalize, because they were going to have debt for a new building. But they were going to get a new building. One of their sections of the building was sinking, so that's why they wanted to rebuild it.
I mean, in one sense, we've made a, I think of it, we've made a command, we've built this building, we have a now new 50-year marriage, basically, between the two towns, going, built this brand new building. And the two elementary schools were built right around, both renovated around the same time period, built and renovated around the same time period. So the two elementary buildings are about the same age. So from a capital standpoint, we're at an equal, on equal footing. I mean, how you choose to allocate the capital debt, as Dave pointed out, is something you have to consider. So that consideration is, I think, passed, because the two towns made the commitment to build this.
The capital is defining your agreement, how that is done. There's no law on that, you could do that however you want to.
It is, yeah, and we revised our original agreement to actually update the capital apportionment. We, we did that actually a couple of years prior to bringing that to town meeting to vote on the, on. vote on the, on the actual building. What we did was we did a five-year rolling average of proportion, of student, student proportion.
Do you want to say something? Just for people if they're interested in the transportation. Boylston Elementary School, we budget a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for transportation. At Berlin Memorial School, we budget a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for transportation, and a sixty percent reimbursement, you're looking at about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars brought back into your communities through regionalization transportation, just to give you an idea of a cost savings of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the two towns.
Take the longer budget, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, that will go away. Then combine to, that increase, check for shadow, the increase, it will, there's a huge opportunity.
And some of the issues we have when you're talking about consolidating contracts could be made up through that regionalization of transportation.
There's a lot of work when you sit down with the contracts, and you make scattergrams, you see where people's salaries are, and...
Yeah.
The processes are well established.
I would expect it would be, you know, something we do not immediately, but consolidate them over time, over so many years, to get to the point where you want to get to.
That's generally what happens when we're there in time, but no one gets anything less than they were making.
And that's, and I think that's the case of all we talked about, where the employees are only in the elementary, the sixth grade, so no one's going to get less than what they're getting from the region.
Okay.
Again...
Any other questions?
So, in terms of actions for a school committee at this point, I understand that this is all new information, but I would love to utilize, when the, you know, a caution here, went to put something on the school committees' plan for action items, to start going down some of these paths, to, and explore what can and can't happen on a short or a long-term basis. I know with my staffing changes for next year, with there is a time incentive to try and take some action quickly. So, in terms of actions, certainly, volunteer, already, a subcommittee, want to look at a agreement for shared stuff, could be, go back, you know, if there's a Berlin volunteer who'd like to join me.
Now, is that my vote of the next meeting, or is that an appointment of the subcommittee's committee?
That's an appointment of the chair, for subcommittee.
So I hear two volunteers?
You did.
Excellent, mine, two favorite volunteers. So we have two volunteers for a subcommittee to do that, and then we should put on a future agenda item for them to report back, hopefully by, I'm not thinking, which is after, as a school, which is without sufficient amount of time to get a report back. That would include consulting with our attorney, perhaps doing a preliminary over trip to the two boards of select meaning, F and K.
I think we need to decide, our committee needs to decide what we want to do, rather than taking all of these steps first, and we are missing a member tonight, too.
Right.
Okay, I think there's two, I think, first step we need to talk about that, is I do think there's a time issue with regard to our employees, so I think that should be the first step we could do immediately, and then on the next agenda, we could talk about the bar art issue.
I would just like to bring a recommendation to the chair, that you put for future agenda items, that you actually open this for discussion, so the school committee can have a full discussion of what next steps, so that everybody's on the same page, and you have all school committee members here for that. So that would just be my recommendation to the chair, is that you just put it on as a future agenda item, as a discussion, as a follow-up of Dr. Hammond's presentation. And then if you decide out of that full discussion, that you want to have your subcommittees and follow forward with the next steps, then I think you've opened up, at least you've had time as a committee to discuss on your own. That would be my recommendation.
I would agree, I think, if Brad hasn't been perfect on the conversation, I think he probably would be interested in hearing what we all have to say.
I would think that there's an opportunity, though, to start doing some of the research now, to see what our options are, so we have something more to talk about.
I think that would be something that the committee would have to direct, the committee to do.
Okay, I've heard from two members of the committee. Ruth, do you have a preference?
I would be comfortable with the subcommittee being formed now, getting the information, and then having the discussion, because I do think we're under some kind of time restraints. I don't want to get it, you know, put the cart before the horse, or, but I do believe that because we are under the time constraints of the budget, I think just exploring the information, not doing anything, we may approach people and come to a wall and not be able to, but I'd like to know at least to know that we, the possibility would exist to have the intermunicipal agreement. So I would be comfortable with at least taking that step, and then next meeting, have a discussion as to pursuing the agreements, if or not.
Okay. And Angela, I'm assuming, I'm assuming you, since you volunteered to be on the subcommittee, you're interested in...
Yeah, I think we definitely need to talk about municipal agreement as soon as possible, and then I think we need to have discussion about how the committee feels long-range planning, if they're leaning towards wanting to go towards full regionalization or not, if they're general sense, you know, if they're comfortable talking to the community members and the other town officers, and finding what things on this list we're going to clean up against. We already know some of them in our communities, but, you know, just so everyone, the committee has a chance to say their upfront reservations or none, you know what I'm saying?
So I think consensus is more that we proceed ahead with the subcommittee to talk particularly about intermunicipal agreements, and report back at the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, to open up for discussion about longer-term goals for exploring regionalization. From my perspective, I would like to apply for any grant, any or all grant money that's possible, because it's always my goal to bring more money into the district. So we should make sure we pay attention, and I'm looking at our superintendent and our fiscal department, to pay attention to the opportunities for grant money to come along, even if it does not result in a regional change to the region, we should apply for it and make good use of it.
I just want to clarify that if that grant does come available, it wouldn't be until, I believe, August.
Yeah, next fiscal year.
So just so that people know, it's not like tomorrow, I can look, and there'll be a grant that we can start looking at.
No, that was, that was pretty clear with the discussion, it would be in this year's budget, a budget through the House and Senate, and then it would be available in next fiscal, next fiscal year, I got that, I just don't want it to be forgotten. Okay, so we have that moving on. I'd like to thank Dr. Hammond, very educational.
So if you can get ahold of him, you...
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
I'll have no rest tomorrow, so I'm gonna...
Thank you, thank you.
Just off to a comment, that you, make sure you keep the finance raised in the loop, because you may, we may need a different line on the town budget to account for this, you know, because if you're saying, you know, some has to come from where the health insurance money is, some has to come from, some has to go all these different parts, there may have to be some data, some mechanism, you know, to have that show up, and then just, so just, just keep us in the loop on that, because it may not just be easy as saying, oh, just write it out of the school budget, so, makes sense.
Our budget's going to print this week.
So is it.
So, it's too late.
Well, we got to do transfers, we had to...
Well, but if they needed a separate line.
But no, I understand that, I'm just saying, if we had to do transfers at the end of the year, it's still, you know, it doesn't kill it for the share, because you can transfer money from health insurance to school, from unemployment to school at town meeting, you know.
And it could be taken care of in a special town meeting.
No, a year from now.
Yeah.
A year from now.
The one that includes...
Because assuming the money's already in the budgets in both towns, it's just a matter of moving it, so, you're not talking any new monies, from what I understand.
Yeah, because these are existing employees.
Right.
So you're talking about the special town meeting that takes place just before the annual town meeting to close out the transfers?
Transfers.
To close out the transfers.
Yes, there's a special people there.
And then FY fifteen, we'd accommodate it in...
We have to have that permanently.
Permanently.
Right.
Yeah, this is all coming...
So I don't think it, I think you can, you can do it, I think that that would be probably out of town enough to deal with it all.
I think you'd have to make sure that we have enough money floating around to do it. If you're talking about using up like our thirty-two B health insurance, because you're going to be billing the towns for the health insurance...
No, what they're talking about, Judy, is the fact that, like, I'll give myself as an example, right now, I have fifty percent of my salary is in the region, and twenty-five in each of the towns, which is just my salary. You already have that encumbered in your, in your budgets now, it's already there. So what he's saying is that if we were to change this, or a central office, myself being included, we're all of a sudden going to get one paycheck, or all of a sudden going to do this, then we need to let you know, because even though the money's there under the salary, we might have to change it to a consulting service line, is what they're saying. We would, I would really recommend that we just finish off the year the way we've already done it, if we're going to do something, we'd make it effective for FY fourteen. I mean, there's nothing, I don't think from now on...
Oh, right, they don't, they don't change mid-year, right.
I think Judy is worried about FY fourteen, because if, Dave just mentioned having a special line in for FY fourteen, we're not having anything but...
But I think, you know what, there's two different conversations here. You're talking about one thing, that actually is not a big deal, because the money's already there for the central office, but I think, let's say, for example, Sally Jones is a point four art teacher in Berlin, and a point four art teacher in Boylston, we're saying you want to combine so she can get benefits, you will, the health insurance policy is new, that wasn't there before. I think that's the concern that you're bringing up, so then, that's...
We actually don't have that issue.
That's not an issue right now.
Okay.
What we're saying is that we have people that are full-time, that will become part-time in both buildings, that currently, they are receiving health insurance, but they might not next year if that's the case, as it stands. So it wouldn't be an addition, it would just be how it's transitioned, just for clarity. And also, just for clarity, we do not have Sally Jones that works in the art department.
We're not, yeah, we're not having new employees, these are...
Yeah.
Being able to effectively allocate existing staff.
I think, I think it's doable, now, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay. Approval, peril, and payable warrants are going around. Consent agenda. We have September eighteenth executive session minutes, and February twenty-seventh open session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Approve it.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear any corrections or amendments that we can't pass to those minutes? Okay. Do we hear a motion? I heard a motion, secretary, all in favor? We have a communication from a Tohoto teacher. Do you want to read it? Diane want to read it?
Diane doesn't have it.
I have it here. It was a wonderful letter, that's why I think it deserves to be read. From Mr. Dougherty. Hi, it's an email. Hi, everyone, thank you for your time on February twenty-seventh for our students' presentation, and our busy schedule is, Steve Lees and I are very proud of our students' work and their presentation. I hope you enjoyed seeing it as much as we enjoyed performing it. Last week, I sent an email to Henry Bestin Society's director that included our students' video, as well as a video of their presentation to you. I thought you would like to see his response, take your, Peter. So now this part is from the Henry Bestin Society director. Hi, Peter, just this past week, I received your email at the same time I was going through my notes and my efforts to retool my book, Henry Bestin's Cape Cod for a New Edition This Spring. Cape Cod National Sea Shore Historian Bill Burke was one of my interview subjects, and we were discussing some of the adventurous segments in The Outer Most House, such as Bestin's Stepping on the Dogfish, and witnessing the deer in the marsh, et cetera. And Bill thought those kinds of instances would be appealing to today's youth in this world of instant gratification. Quote, "The National Park Service is concerned that many people are spending too much time indoors, and we're afraid that the new generation of kids not experiencing nature and being afraid of nature," end quote, if he said, quote again. And so I think The Outer Most House should have another resurgence to be instructed to parents in the new generation coming into the world, that the outdoors can teach you a lot of interesting life lessons that you would otherwise miss being in front of a computer or a video game. These books come out now to reengage children of nature, so if they want to go outdoors, you have to force them to go out and play. Bestin, if interpreted correctly, makes, made a little simple work for younger readers, could be an inspiration for the younger techno generation. End quote. It was after this that I watched your students' videos, and I was thrilled to see what was accomplished there. Much as I want to see what the students at Chatham High School have done with their English curriculum over the last couple of years, our goal has been to introduce Bestin, The Outer Most House, and its lessons to the younger generation. I'm happy to see that our resources were helpful to you and your students. If it's okay with you, I'd like to share the story of your students and their videos with the world via our web, our website, Facebook, and Twitter pages, and our blog, which is hosted by the Cape Cod Times, and our newsletter, The Gallant Vagabond. I would also be happy to present my lecture documentary film footage screening program, Henry Bestin's Cape Cod Inspiration for a National Sea Shore, to you and your students at the school and or the need facility in Easton, should you bring another group there again. I divide my time equally between Northridge and the Cape, so getting to either location is not a problem. Thanks very much, Don Wiley. And this will close it, but that was, I thought that was an excellent letter, and it demonstrated what fantastic job both our faculty and the students did with their presentation, what they learned from their trip to The Outer Most House, and for those of you who haven't seen it on the cable access, you really should try to catch that presentation.
If, we could, we'll post a link to the Cape Cod Times, as a reminder, they had a great, a column, and a teacher, or students, or a presentation, as the bottom line, almost, it was really pretty awesome. If, we could, we'll post a link to it on our website, that would be, you know, a good way for people to access it. And like, they also linked to the YouTube videos, some of them were a creative, and it was, it is pretty neat.
Now, when I received this email, and I was sent to everyone, I sent Mr. Dougherty a response directly, I don't know if we, can anyone send a formal response, or if that was...
You put it on the act of the chair.
Okay, because I think you got it.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, but that was just, these kids were really impressive, and I can't say enough good things about the whole program, and teachers, the kids, everything.
Diane, can you make sure that that gets on the website?
Yeah, it is on, the actual Cape Cod online blog is on there, but I'll have the actual presentation be put on there, that the Bestin Society highlights student work is our own website.
Totally.
Okay, moving on to reports. I see our CPAC representative Jill is here.
Yes. CPAC is in the middle of collecting nominations for our Excellent Educator Awards. I think this is our fifth year doing that, and parents of children who receive special education services can nominate an educator they believe has gone above and beyond. I believe flyers were sent out at the elementary schools, I don't think Tohoto posted it, but there is a link on the CPAC website if you want more information. The deadline for nominations is April twelfth, and then we hand out the awards during Teacher Appreciation Week in May at each school. And then coming up in April, we have the Federation for Children with Special Needs coming on Tuesday, the twenty-third, up in the media center, to talk to us about MCAS testing, and how students with disabilities can fully... up in the media center to talk to us about MCAS testing and how students with disabilities can fully participate and be successful in MCAS testing. And that's at seven o'clock.
Excellent.
Thank you.
My colleague, Mr. Brenner, here pointed out that I missed item eight, petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Are there any corrections or... Okay. Usually there aren't. That's probably why I missed it. Superintendents report.
Sure. I'm going to start first with the building committee update. The building committee met on Wednesday, March thirteenth, and they discussed the process of the project at this time. The architect had reported that there were still approximately eleven hundred items remaining. However, I was informed last week that they are down to six hundred items remaining on the punch list. But they are still also continuously walking through the buildings and trying to put the items off the list. They also reported that the building was first opened, there were forty-eight large items opened, and now there's only sixteen. I don't know where that is since the March thirteenth meeting, but that was at that time. Also, PMA did express some frustration with CTA at this point in that they would like to get more subcontractors following through more expeditiously. So we're still working on that and trying to get everything going. The excavation company actually is going to be supplying PMA with a redesign of our fields and the retaining wall, and that is because the alignment, the grade of the alignment is a little bit different than what they originally had anticipated, so they have to do the redesign. However, that has not took cost of the district. They're actually doing that for us. Also, I would also like to thank Michael, and I hope I say his last name correctly, Riddinger?
Correct.
Riddinger. He's from Pink Media Systems. He actually set up our television equipment here for our new studio, and W BAC has also agreed to pay for half of this fee, and items are taped in our new studio and will be broadcast over at W BAC's channel. Also, after the building committee meeting, Bill Anderson from Berlin met with Peter Mackey, our media teacher, to determine how we'll be able to broadcast over the local Berlin channel as well. And we're bringing in chart of communication. We should be able to connect and reconnect with the Tohanto local TV station that they have as well. So Diane, was there anything more on that update that you've heard of most recently? Okay, that was the most we had. And for those of you who haven't driven by our building, we did start yesterday with the actual official demolition of the building. I don't know, you know, how emotional it was here later on in the day as we were thinking about it, but the kids and the staff and everything were able to go out and were all able to stand out there and watch that first break. And it was quite, quite interesting to see. And once we were getting closer to Diane's office, Diane quickly moved everybody back into the building. It's quite a, quite a difference here to see the building actually starting to come down. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about the school attending children. You should have the documents demonstrating the Berlin and Boylston school attending in comparison from January first of two thousand twelve to January first of two thousand thirteen. And you can see our enrollment in January first of two thousand twelve. We had between K through twelve, Berlin and Boylston combined was eight hundred sixty-five students. And as of this January, again, K through twelve, Berlin and Boylston combined was eight hundred fifty-seven students. So when you look at the high school themselves, we have more students... Well, when you look at the numbers of the choice out students in Berlin versus Boylston and last year to this year, in Berlin, last year it was thirty-five students, this year it's thirty-seven. And last year in Boylston, it was seventeen, and this year it shows forty-one. This has been noted as being a large difference. With the state, it's been determined that there's such a different variety. And what Cheryl has been doing is working with the towns to see where those differences are from how they might have labeled the district versus vocational and the charter and private versus how we identify them.
I'm going to interrupt you, because I looked at that with a little alarm, because I went back and did a five-year analysis. Because the previous year, the choice out was thirty-one. So that's just a huge drop from thirty-one to seventeen and back up to forty-one. So there's something really odd about that number seventeen...
From last year.
From the year before.
There's a pair somewhere.
That just strikes, because I looked, because otherwise it's fairly consistent. So that's too much of a dip to be normal.
This is what Cheryl and I were really looking at. And if you look at your chart, it says this was estimated using the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven data versus this year's was estimated using the town census information. So they're actually using two different data points to formulate that information. So there's been some discrepancy between the two thousand ten, eleven data versus the actual town census. And that's where Cheryl's going back to, with the towns, to determine what that process is. It has been noted by DESE as well, and we got notification this past, this week about that. So we're still looking at it, but that's what was reported.
Okay, because that...
Yep.
That was a pretty anomalous, anomalous. The other thing I wanted to comment on that school attending data is we should be able to figure out choice out, because we're transferring school choice funds out there. So DESE should be able to figure out where that money was going. If we don't know which individual student did it, that should be an accounting issue. So...
Should be is the key word?
Should be, yes, I know.
Or key word, but all we can do is, you know, we get so much data from ours, and we can do the best that we can on our end of where they are. But there's also some information that we're not necessarily privy to. So we, sometimes that's why you see estimate, and that's what we have to do, the estimate. The next item on mine is also the regional agreement update. I'm happy to report that as of March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, I received this letter from Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education. It says, "The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has received the most recent revision of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District Agreement. The agreement now incorporates and consolidates all amendments approved by your member towns since the regional agreement was first approved in nineteen fifty-nine. It also includes the most recent amendment approved by the towns of Berlin and Boylston to add grade six to the regional school district. We have reviewed your most recent agreement and found it to be in compliance with applicable law and regulation. I therefore approve your agreement and the expansion of the regional school district to include grade six effectively July first, two thousand thirteen." So that's very exciting news. It's been a lot of work with the legals and trying to get all the wording and everything finalized. So I'm really pleased to hear that, and I, and it's official, we're going to have sixth grade here in the fall.
Do you want to comment on the...
On the business item? Do you want me to jump forward on that?
We have to go down to the warrant article for the...
Sure. The...
Because that's not on the business side.
No, actually, the warrant article that has gone to the towns is because there was one amendment that was done in nineteen seventy-three that both towns could not find that there was an official vote to approve. And what that is considering is the portion, how you get your money. In the original agreement was quarterly, and it was based on the annual calendar. So January first to December thirty-first. However, in nineteen seventy-three, there was an amendment to the agreement stating that we would get money from the towns six times a year, and that's based on the fiscal calendar, meaning July first to June thirtieth. Now, since nineteen seventy-four, we have been actually receiving funds the way that amendment has been set up. However, there has not been, we could not find, between the towns and our office, could not find the official vote and stamp to state that, yes, that was official. So when I spoke with Christine Lynch about the regional agreement, she had stated I needed to take, the only way I could get the regional agreement approved was I had to take that amendment out, because it's not beneficial. It's not even, it's not officially stated, so you can't put an amendment into the original agreement without an official vote. So right now, the way the agreement is set up, it is set so that you will receive funds four times a year based on the annual. And so it's gone to town meeting, and there's a town meeting article to actually, that First Amendment, the exact wording of the First Amendment that you originally had, will be coming forward at the town meeting, so that it can be approved at the town, in which case, if it gets approved in the town, in both towns, then the money just goes the way it's always done. There's no change. Nothing changes in either office. If it doesn't approve, then we go back to the way it was done prior to nineteen seventy-three. So the way it was done forty-two, forty-four years ago, that's the way it would have to happen. So that's why there's the article, and then it'll become your first official amendment of your new agreement that's effective July first.
So it's very important that we approve this at both towns, because nobody wants to go back to the old accounting system.
Well, the new accounting system is the way the accounting system has been for forty-two years. So that's the way you want to keep it, otherwise the accounting offices will really be like, ah! So next we have...
Um, principals, setting the best...
It's my pleasure to report that the New England Association of Schools and Colleges reviewed the special products report that was submitted up to Tohanto Regional Middle High School and continued the school's accreditation. The committee voted unanimously to remove the school from the morning for the standard accreditation on community resources for learning, which is basically our building environment. So the committee commended school system officials and members of the local governing body for their extensive work in bringing forward a proposal for the building of the new Tohonto to the voters of both communities for supporting the construction of a state-of-the-art facility which ensures students have a school site and plan which support the delivery of high-quality educational programs and services and assists students in achieving the school's twenty-first century learning expectations. So congratulations to everyone on that. For events, we finished the first round of ELA MCAS for students in grades seven, eight, and ten. This occurred during March nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. We only had one small glitch, and that was the snowstorm, which moved the ELA composition basically for the entire state. We're currently running an MCAS prep program for students who scored the needs improvement award category on their most recent MCAS tests, which were the spring of two thousand twelve. And this is a free program that is taught by a certified Tohanto math teacher, and it is available to students in grades seven, eight, nine, and ten. So that is continuing on until the week before our math MCAS runs. The high school student council hosted a black light dance on March sixteenth for students in grades nine through twelve. And the middle school student council hosted a semi-formal dance on March twenty-second for students in grades seven and eight. And on March twenty-seventh, the school counseling department hosted a job Saturday for seventh-grade students to introduce them to a variety of careers and job experiences. And students went to local jobs and businesses to get a little snippet of what those professions are actually like and the day-to-day operations of those professions. I'd like to thank school counselor Lauren Russell for all of her organization with this. It was not an easy feat, as well as staff for serving as chaperones for them. March eighteenth, the first day for all spring sports. Baseball, softball, track, and a cooperative girls' tennis team with Clinton are sports that are being offered this spring. Unfortunately, we don't obviously have any field space available here, and because of the weather and the snow, it has been very difficult scheduling practices and space. I believe today was the first day that the softball team actually was able to go and down to the elementary school to be able to use an actual field for grass. So that is, we're trying to walk through that, but I believe our track team opens up season with the first meet tomorrow. And scheduling began for current students in grades eight through eleven. We have teacher recommendations, and student electives have been inputted into iPass, and we ran all of the requests for that. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with department heads to hand-schedule AP classes, and then we'll run the master schedule for current students in eighth through eleven, which is next year's grades nine through twelve. The presentation for seventh graders will be held on April tenth. It was originally scheduled for April fourth, but we are just tweaking the final middle school model before we go ahead and meet with the seventh graders and have them input their elective courses. Myself and Ms. Russell will be going down to the two elementary schools. We're going to Berlin Elementary on April tenth, actually, excuse me, April eleventh, to meet with students in grades five and six to present the program of studies, introduce them to the scheduling process, and answer questions regarding the student schedule, a typical day and course offerings. And the same presentation will occur the following day on April second for the Boylston Elementary students in grades five and six. And a middle school parent orientation night will occur for parents of incoming sixth and seventh graders on April twenty-fifth, from six to eight p.m. here at Tohonto, tours of the school, an overview of the middle school program of studies, scheduling, and extracurricular activities. And a question-and-answer session will be occurring that evening as well. We have some recognitions. We have Teacher of the Month, Mr. Paul Howard. And that was really not a teacher. He is recipient of this month's award. And Mr. Howard is, this is a quote from the person that nominated him. "Mr. Howard is more than just a master of MCAS scheduling and coverages. He has dedicated his first few years of retirement to help Tohonto transition to the new building. Whatever's needed, Mr. Howard has been there to help, and the faculty and staff are grateful for his time, knowledge, and commitment to them and also to the students." So congratulations and thank you to Mr. Howard. Senior Kate Gay was awarded the Daughters of the American Revolution Award in early March in Worcester. And Kate was honored for her commitment to the school community and her academic excellence. It was a very nice ceremony that school counselor, Mr. Doherty, myself, and Kate's parents were able to attend in Worcester. Lauren Steele Jr. was invited to sing in the Massachusetts All-State Festival. Talented high school musicians first had to audition, then perform with the regional district music festivals throughout Massachusetts. And if they earned a score high enough, they were then recommended to audition for Mass All-State Festival. Each student then had to audition a second time and earn a score above the all-state cutoff standard to allow them into a two-hundred-and-fifty-voice all-state festival chorus. Lauren was chosen to perform in the two-hundred-and-fifty-all-voice state festival chorus at Symphony Hall in Boston, which was held on March second, two thousand thirteen. So we'd like to congratulate Lauren, as well as the music and choral staff, for their dedication. And we are very proud of Lauren and her accomplishments. So thank you.
Thank you. Business items. Policy, G E E E C, gifts to and... Gifts to and solicitations by staff. I know we covered this at the Boylston Elementary meeting. I don't know if Pearl and Heather can...
So, can I just go over the changes, sorry? So the changes were, there's currently a policy in place about solicitations and gifts to and by staff. And so what was changed was based on the MAS C recommendations and in agreement with the ethics, code of ethics and ethics law. So if you look at the class gifts section, as well as the gifts for school use section, those two sections were the areas that were revised based on the recommendations by MAS C. Chris, did I miss anything from that? Those were the two sections?
No.
Okay. And Rebecca, are you aware of those? And in Boylston. So this is already a policy you have in place. You do not need to do a first read. You can go right into a vote for this.
Just to note that a Boylston policy was approved.
Yes. Essentially, this allows us to be compliant to the state law.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Of course, I should comment. As a devil's advocate, just went on the gifts for school use. It's more a problem I've noticed at the elementary school level, and I guess it's really classroom supplies are probably due up, but if a teacher is gifted like a bookshelf or a mixer, and it's mostly a case of like books, they're gifted several books. And when the teacher moves to teaches a different content course or a different grade, they take their collection of books with them, or if they leave the district, they take their collection of books with them. So I guess my comment is really about if there's something that could be said about. It's not a big deal, but just basically that that's property of the classroom. I know it kind of addresses that here, but it's a gray area. Mostly at the elementary school with all the movement around that happens there, so that is a non-issue.
Actually, that's the responsibility of the building principal to make sure. So when a teacher receives those gifts, it's actually stating in here that it's actually a classroom gift and not an employee gift, which is what you're referring to, but also that they have to have documentation and receipts. So when a gift is given, if it's a box of tissues, if it's a shelf, if it's books, that has to be documented by the teacher, and it's up to the principal to make sure that they're collecting those receipts. And when a teacher does move, or a teacher leaves for whatever reason, it's the responsibility of the principal to make sure those things are still left in that classroom. So yeah, and if that's not happening, or you're seeing that's not happening, that's my job to then, you know, you report it to me, and I go up to the principal, and the principal has to be held accountable following up with that. I mean, unfortunate, but there's incidences where, you know, I've actually had to stand there and watch a teacher empty a desk to make sure no files are being removed, even a file or anything, a sheet of paper. I mean, that's our responsibility to do that. So if that's not happening, then it's, that's responsibility of the principal, and I need to make sure that that doesn't continue.
Can I hear a second? Paula's in here.
Hi.
FY fourteen, school choice recommendations.
So what you have in front of you is a projected enrollment for next year, FY thirteen and FY fourteen. And I'm actually going to let Diane talk a little bit more about her recommendation for next year.
There were two documents. They were named similarly. One has a number one after it. Is there a, are we...
I don't really know any of these, I'm sorry.
This one has the number one after it, and that one's the other one. Is there one we should be looking at?
These were the two documents that we're giving?
Yeah. Do we need both of them, or is there one we're working on? Is it... Did they cover some more things? I just didn't have this one.
I would go off with the smaller block graph. This one here.
Not the one.
Historically, I believe the committee has approved anywhere, depending upon the year, between ninety and a hundred school choice slots for the entire grade seven to We have currently to date received fifteen school choice requests for incoming sixth grade, thirteen school choice requests for incoming seventh grade, nine for incoming eighth, eleven for incoming ninth, seven for incoming tenth, six for incoming eleventh, and four for incoming twelfth graders. So in total, we have had sixty-five requests for school choice slots for the 2013, 2014 school year. In previous years, when I made recommendations, the numbers have not taken into account school choice numbers of students who are already currently in the district that we quote-unquote own from the elementary schools who are school choice. So that kind of, because it is shown here, skews the numbers just a little bit. So currently, my recommendation for the incoming grade six, between Berlins and Boylston, and the current school choice students that are in those two elementary schools, there are currently seventy-six students that are slated to come up to Tejant next year into grade six. Historically, we have had classes, incoming seventh grade classes, of anywhere from ninety to ninety-five students. So it is my recommendation that we take and accept or open up fifteen school choice slots for the incoming sixth grade. That would bring the total number up to ninety-one, and that is if every single current student who is in grade five this school year comes up here to Tejant in grade six. For grade seven, currently incoming grade seven, there are seventy-two students from Berlins and Boylston, five of which of those are school choice. It's my recommendation to open up thirteen slots to bring the total for the upcoming grade seven to eighty-five. My recommendation, currently, we are at, for current grade eight, ninety-one students. We have nine requests. My recommendation is not to open up any slots to our incoming grade eight students because of our enrollment is already at ninety-one. For incoming ninth graders, this is a little bit more tricky because of the fact, again, that we have currently twelve ASABET applications. We can't, you know, we've had this happen before where the day before, students who we thought were going to ASABET don't go to ASABET. So we have to sort of, you know, try to guesstimate how many exactly out of those twelve will actually end up going. So if we take the current enrollment, which is eighty-nine, and we subtract, we say that all twelve go, you know, get accepted and/or go, that brings it down to seventy-seven. So my recommendation is to open up eleven school choice slots for grade nine, and that would bring the total up to eighty-eight. For grade ten, my recommendation is, actually for grades ten, eleven, and twelve, is not to accept any school choice and to keep those numbers exactly the same. I always, I think historically, I have always recommended not to take juniors and seniors for school choice, and I'd like to continue with that, as well as grade ten, just because of the sheer numbers of school choice students.
I know we have a family in the district who is currently attending the elementary school in Tejant who is moving out. I believe a present eleventh grader or moving in eleventh grader.
Present eleventh grader.
So we'd have...
They're currently school choice or they're currently resident?
They're currently resident students moving out who would like to stay in the district, but it's, I believe it's an eleventh grader, and I know we can't specifically accommodate one student, but that would, by not allowing any school choice at that level, we preclude that.
Thank you, Megan Stevens. If this student is currently an eleventh grader, your policy clearly states that if they become a school choice student in the twelfth grade, then we would approve so that they can finish out their educational, their education with the peers that they have grown up with and attended. So your policy clearly states that they would be allowed to do that for their senior year. So I just want to clarify.
And so if we don't open up any of the school choice slots, they can still...
That's correct, based on your policy, yes. If they are, only if they are becoming a school choice in their senior year, if they've attended here for grades K through eleven or whatever, their senior year as seniors.
All right. Just to add my question, Diane. The second from right-hand column, that's the number of requests that we currently have standing.
Sixty-five.
And then your recommendations are, and if, you can just go down each grade with those numbers. I think those numbers are not here, right?
My recommendation for grade six is to accept fifteen, to accept the one. Grade seven, thirteen. Grade eight, none. And grade nine, the eleven. Better than the last one. Grade ten, eleven, and twelve, not to accept any.
I think the student in question would be an incoming eleventh grader, because I know the younger sister is an incoming seventh grader. I know we can't make policies for specific students.
You cannot make policies on specific students. You have to go by what the recommendation is and the justification based on, we're looking at the students that we have in our district, based on the staffing that we have to support. So the recommendation is not based on individual basis, other than, the only case that you allow is if there's siblings left, which you do allow to place to the main school choice. A grade is not open, but it would allow a sibling to enter. You do allow that as well, but this is not the case, and you can't make a decision based on that.
So if there's no openings at all, even if there's a sibling, you can't allow it?
This is the administration's part. That's third. We just decide on the slots.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm looking at it.
So I'm glad you clarified, Diane, because I wasn't really clear with the numbers and the choice request, if those were the ones you were requesting. Those were people who requested school choices. Those are the people that have requested. Okay.
Yeah, those people have requested.
So on this one form, all?
Okay. I'm getting used to getting cut off. Diane, you have sort of guessed at the number of ASABET students or kids that might be going to ASABET.
Right.
What about other students? Is there any guessing? Again, you know, I have not, usually the school counselors will tell me when they have received, you know, either teacher recommendations to be written to private schools, et cetera. I have not, I have not received any, but there really is no way of knowing. But I have not, I have not, the school counselors have not said that they have received any. Okay. That was, that was my other question. And so the total for the school in the high school?
So forty-eight.
It's the request?
Yes, five hundred and forty-eight, correct.
And then last year, the enrollment was?
Last year was four hundred and forty-five.
So that's like an increase of like a hundred kids?
Yeah, but we have another grade that we never had.
You what?
We have a grade we never had.
That's right. I'm just, the number made me nervous because we built this school.
Right.
We built a school. It was for, what, five fifty?
Five fifty.
Here we are.
But we didn't build it for an increase in, yeah, we built it for the same size.
So I was just getting nervous about that number. Yeah, I realize that. Okay.
And that's why, you know, that's why the recommendation, you know, like in the eighth grade, is to not accept anyone, because I don't want to see those numbers, you know, really go above that. I mean, we have had in the past at the old building, we have had a seventh grade class of a hundred kids. It was...
This year's, this year's third grade is our largest grade across the district.
And then, so, sixty-five requests, but you're only asking for...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay. Thirty-nine plus the choice that we originally are.
That are already here. So that's one hundred and twenty-seven.
Wow. And the other thing I was looking at too, the difference was the choice, 2013, 14, the total from grade six through twelve is eighty-eight presently. But over here, on the October first enrollment for 2012, where is it now?
Chris, that's because that one is for grade seven through twelve, and now we're counting grade six on this one.
Okay, but I'm looking at last year's numbers, so that would still be correct, wouldn't it, for choice?
No, because she's included our six, our, this year's fifth grade that's next year's sixth grade in this one.
Because it was a difference of a couple kids. I was wondering, because I don't remember opening any other additional slots.
Yep, that's why.
That was my question. Okay.
Just making sure we're not confusing this here just because we're...
Right.
So the thinking here, just to summarize is, you're targeting an overall class size in the middle school of approximately, you know, eighty-five to ninety-one students, and then...
Which is typical of what we've had.
And then you have the high school, where there's natural tropics, where some kids go to ASABET or wherever, and we end up with... I'll, I'll move to approve the school choice recommendations of the...
Yes, if anyone has a question. Or as a larger...
I have two quick questions. So my first question is, saying that these large members at the middle school did go into the high school grades, can you accommodate that with your teaching staff and stuff you have now, even though they're smaller? And this, I'm looking at the other page, but the two siblings for the sixth grade, is that included in this fifteen? That's not additional, right?
No, that's included.
Go ahead.
How can you make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Aren't we supposed to have a motion out there? Didn't we talk about stuff?
Yes, but we didn't do that.
Well, I'm still gonna make a motion.
Go for it.
Move to approve the school choice recommendations presented by the president.
Can I have a second there? Somebody else can second it.
It wasn't us, you two.
I'll second it.
Okay, so my resolution is, this gets me absolutely no votes because this is a Berlins family, but I think we should accommodate one slot in the eleventh grade to accommodate the sibling, who is then a Tejant student all along, and I don't think we should kick that student out.
Can I just clarify?
Because we've done this for kindergarten.
But Rebecca, I just want to clarify, that if you open up for one slot, there are four people. That person becomes part of that, and it becomes a lottery. That child does not automatically get the slot.
If that sibling gets in as a seventh grader, then automatically that eleventh grader gets the slot.
But I don't know if that seventh grader is even the one that's on the recommendation, is all I'm saying. Oh, we can't discuss that?
We can't, I don't, I have no problem with the...
You should discuss an individual student here.
No.
No, I can't, I can't, the seventh grader may not make the lottery, but that's precluding the eleventh grader from getting in if the seventh grader doesn't make the lottery. Again, it's...
So Larry made a motion.
And do I have a second?
If issues come up like that, and I think administration can bring it to later...
If the issues come up like that, and I think administration can bring it to later days, this is an extenuating circumstance, and they'd like you to consider, you know, so.
And, and again, it's...
And they've done that before.
Right.
Right.
So if this...
Right.
So if this, if the hypothetical situation where one sibling gets in, you know, the sibling, because again, these are already attending students who are, who...
Oh, is, is this the number that is counted on for the FY fourteen budget? That was my one question. It is.
And then the words?
Counted on getting this approved, these numbers of school choice slots approved.
Do you mean the hundred and seventy-five?
Oh, okay, because you've budgeted, you've budgeted, four hundred and eighty-six, seven hundred and ten dollars is budgeted from the, for the FY fourteen budget. Is that accounting for these additional slots, or no?
No, because we're not using current year school choice receipts for current expenses. We're only using what we have in the previous.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
I just like, I, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with it, um, thinking that there's going to be a hundred and fifty-seven Berlin students and a hundred and twenty-seven school choice, and that we haven't been new building, and I look at the numbers of people that aren't in the district that might come back. I guess I'm just expressing my concerns. And I know I probably should have called you sooner and had you, you know, talked through it a little bit more. I'm, I'm just concerned that we're right, like, at capacity, and we're kind of, does anybody else feel that way?
I'm a little nervous about the number. But I was even more nervous when I thought that Diane was requesting.
Me too. Sixty-five slots. Me too.
So I guess that made me feel better.
Yeah.
We are still, like, assuming here that, you know, we've held to our, uh, to our full expectation that adding these slots is not going to add staff. We are going to increase our costs.
You also, you also have to realize that we can do the lottery and offer these slots, and we may not get all of those slots filled in every grade, and that has happened. Where we have, you know, opened up and had ninety slots, but only filled eighty-five of them, because the school choice people decided either to stay, you know, with the district, and we went through lottery, and, you know, we contacted the other people that were on the, the list. So again, it's, it's, you know, it's sort of a balancing act, and, you know, we try to do, you know, our estimates and, and the best that we can.
So, so even in these requests, they're just requests?
They're requests, there's no guarantee that these people are going to take the slots.
Okay, but you do have, actually have that number of requests right now.
Correct. Right, so the process would be, we would then send out applications with a deadline to make sure people were still interested, and then if there are more people than slots available, then would we do a lottery?
And then, um, so, uh, do we have any idea, um, in prior years, I know we typically approve more slots that have actually been filled? Do we have any idea of what our track record is as far as like number of slots to the number of students who actually?
I can get that information. I think the past two years, we have, um, had approximately, you know, three, two or three slots per grade that we have opened up that have not been filled, and that is because, you know, they may have heard from another school earlier than they heard from us, or people have just changed their minds.
Just a quick question about the process. When, when the situation that Rebecca did bring up arises, and a family does move out of the district, they don't automatically become school choice, correct? Because there is no slot, if there is no slot, they don't become school choice, correct? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I think I do.
See that face?
So if halfway through the year, they move out of the district, they can stay if it's near the end of the year, we let them stay for the remainder of the year, and no, they're not counted as school choice in that case.
Right.
At the beginning of the new year, it's a whole new year. So at that point, they would become school choice if they move out throughout, say they move out in March or April. Keep them in for the remainder of the year, let them finish off the year. But if they want to stay here next year, that's a whole new year.
Why?
They have to apply for school choice, and then they go into the lottery, just like everybody else.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of...
Unless it's the senior year. Unless it's the senior.
Which we have, we, we do have a senior, which that happened to, for sure. The senior year, we let them finish off.
I was just kind of, I mean, it was sort of a, oh, a practice that was happening a few years ago with a previous principal, not here, at Berlin Memorial. So, and, and it was like a big surprise to him that he couldn't do that. So I, 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 it doesn't look like it in the numbers, that's why I was confirming.
At what point do you get notified that somebody might be coming back to the district from either private school choice?
They can walk in here.
And on one of four seven, they can walk in here on Monday morning and say, "We're back." As long as they live in Berlin, the Boyleston, they're, "We're back."
We had a resident, we had a resident from, from a private school on January third. Never attended the schools. Came in on January third.
So it can happen at any time, so.
Is it common that it happens, though? It's a couple times a year, if that.
I mean, with the new building, we need more. We had two students return from Asabat, um, and we've had the private school student return.
Just, uh, one.
It's not going to affect everything, we still have the permit for it.
Like, it does, you know, walking over the sun.
Right, that's not uncommon either.
Right.
Um, just a thought, even if, even if half of these slots get upped, we're paying for the, for the building as is, we're paying for our staff as is, even if half of them actually come in, you know, that's a hundred, a thousand dollars per year. If all of them came in, which is highly unlikely, that's like two hundred thousand a year, and it is almost an added cost, but we'll bring in additional money at a time that we don't want to be asking our taxpayers to continue to pay more. And it's just, it's hard to walk away from that.
And it's like it was...
It's also hard to, you, you really can't look at these numbers as dollar-sized, there are people, you know, so.
I understand, but we already have these costs to operate the school, and we're all figures, looking for, for, I'm not saying to treat people as dollars.
No.
But we have to understand that we're responsible for the school budget, and we have to, at least partially, to do that.
And class size and all of other things?
Absolutely, and we have to be able to, we're applying to some extent on our administration, recommending what they think is appropriate, that they can balance with the resources they have to educate these students.
And she has.
That's why I support the recommendation.
I thought you were supporting the sixty-five in that call.
No.
Yes, I also just want to point out that although, um, Diane has stated the twelve students that, um, will be going to Asabat, that brings that ninth grade down to seventy-seven, we also have some potential school choice students there that are here in eighth grade this year that might choice somewhere else next year, but we're just rolling over the current. So that could be another impact as well, if school choice here for seventh and eighth grade, but may choose to go somewhere else that we necessarily know about either.
Tara Ferguson used to count on five percent leaving, but we, they, they have to school that either.
Correct.
I'm just thinking, you guys are doing such a fantastic job, that everybody's going to come back, and everybody's going to want a school choice. And that we're going to be busting at the seams. But I, I will go with your recommendation, obviously, I'm a professional, and if you're comfortable with it, I can support you. I'm just a little concerned, but I'll go with it.
Okay. Do you hear votes, all those in kindergarten?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Because I, from my perspective, I feel like I can't open up a singles lot in kindergarten to accommodate a sibling, and not open up a singles lot at the high school. I hope accommodation will be needed in the, uh, in the off chance that a sibling needs to be accommodated.
That's just not our place.
It is the elementary school to accommodate the kindergarten, I can't...
Only within policy, only, only within the structure.
It is in the structure of policy, I don't know, it could be something else. I don't see any difference, I'm not arguing anymore. I just voted no, I explained why. FY fourteen budget update.
Andy?
It's a Berlin family, because...
Is that completely, yes, move on. Stay on the budget, Andy?
So, I mean, after our presentation, I would recommend that the committee vote the budget as presented by the superintendent. If you can answer any questions, I'll come down and head over.
Can you just give the actual number for the Tohonto budget specifically, what we're looking for?
The number is seven million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Do we have a motion?
I think the motion to approve the Tohonto budget of seven million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple questions, as usual. Um, I don't remember what sheet it was, but I noticed, like, the rubbish removal line was much less. I'm just curious, did we get a new contractor, or did we, I was like, wow, that's the real thing. And then I'm still a little unclear on the, one of them was out of district, the out of district that comes in and is classified as out of district, it's not choice or... I was confused about that, it's just a few kids, and I don't really know what that means. And I, I don't know which sheet it's on, to point to it.
Out of district placement.
Yeah, but it's, it's like a number that's coming into our district, but it's classified as out of district. Does that make any sense?
I don't know where it would be coming in, unless you're looking at the circuit breaker number, I don't know, unless you're... You're talking about the out of district that's in the general budget, those are the out of district students that we place with special needs for various reasons, that they attend another school to get their needs met.
Coming in, so we don't have any...
Are you asking for tuition?
There is a student coming from Boyleston to Berlin, paying tuition to Berlin, a special education student. Is that possibly where you saw it?
Because it's like one, so that would be in the elementary budget, that's why you wouldn't see it here in Tohonto's budget.
Thank you.
And yet another situation that would be facilitated, that would be before the... Yes?
Andy, could you just tell me how the, is it considered foundation enrollments? What students are taken into consideration when they come up with a gap class?
I have a guess. It's, uh, they, they have a, and I'm going to butcher this, because I always do, but I'm giving my best, and they being a guy, I'm talking in my ear, and he's helping me out. It's, uh, K to twelve, right? And they do a percent of pre-K, but has that changed this year? I thought in FY fourteen that they're talking about allocating more for the preschool.
That's, that is correct.
Right, so it's pre-K twelve, and then there's, uh, those students that you are fiscally responsible for. So included in our foundation enrollment are the choice kids that we sent out, because we are fiscally responsible for them.
What about charter and private?
Uh, anyone who has a district placement that we're fiscally responsible for is in a foundation.
And it's, and even though we're a region, they take into consideration pre-K through twelve?
Well, I was taking the three in, as one, you know.
Okay, because when we, when we, when you come up with the percentages, Berlin went to forty-one percent.
Correct.
That's the kind of, the number I'm trying to figure out.
That is based on six to twelve.
Six to twelve, but in the district, if we had to pay for them, if they all came here?
The ones that were fiscally responsible. So from grade six to twelve, if we have kids that are choicing out, that we are on the dime for them, so, but that's part of our foundation.
Along with charter, along with private, so if there is a child that is schooling?
You know, private, out of district placement to a private program for special education.
Okay.
But if they're going to a private school, that is a, we're not...
We don't have to, we don't have to count them as...
Correct.
So, so no school choice in?
Correct, that is the setting.
No private school.
Correct.
But charter, yes?
Yes.
Charter, yes, and choice, yes.
But those are the ones going out.
Correct.
Not the ones going in. Because they could, okay. Thank you.
One, Diane, I do have a question, uh, just as far as voting the assessments, you can add the next.
Okay, we still have, we have a motion, we have a motion in a second, we need to really finish this out, and then we can move on to questions.
Actually, that's a question about what we vote.
We're voting right now on the budget, and then the next motion will be the assessment to each town. That's why I don't want to let this, this get away from us. Correct?
Yes, you're voting right now on the budget, and then he will be talking to you about the update on the assessment, and then you'll be voting on the assessment.
Because it has to be done in two stages, and this is what the number will go on town when you warrant. Okay. Do I hear? Uh, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. Okay, so the next?
Yeah, it was just sort of a process question as to how it's been done here, and, because you don't technically have to vote the assessments on the end of April.
No, they, they actually asked, well, I know it was in the com, actually wanted it...
That's only for, so...
Now, because when they print the warrant, they wanted it sooner.
Yes, so I would say that our recommendation would be that we vote the assessments based on what we would call the worst-case scenario, which is the FY thirteen funding. So the assessment figure that I would recommend, we'd recommend for Berlin, for FY fourteen would be two million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Do you hear that, Christine?
Two, five, nine, one, one, five, seven?
Correct, and Boyleston would be three million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Are you all set with that?
Yes, Diane.
Do we hear a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you do your, your motion on your second?
It's, it's a parliamentary procedure.
And I vote. Now, you, are we just doing Berlin?
No, you're doing a full, both, you're doing a full assessment, you're giving what both towns are, but you're giving the actual assessment.
No, no, the motion, are we doing only Berlin? Did you give Boyleston's?
I did give Boyleston's.
Okay, I did. All right, so we make a motion.
A motion has presented.
Second.
Okay, now we have a discussion.
Okay, um, so these numbers are the worst case, which are not... Because this is the assessment, this is counting in the assumed money from the state, correct? And it's the worst case, so it's, so it's the minimum, so you, you likely have to, if, if, if these numbers are on time, you would vote. Correct. If by then, no. I say that not being, just with the fact that even though House is coming out, and we're hearing next week, uh, we've heard some discussions, we've got... we've heard some discussions regarding Senate, and you're doing it electro-morally.
The Senate actually, Senator actually told me that directly, said they're not doing anything till after Memorial Day.
And the reason for the audience at home is why we present the worst case scenario on town meeting is once it's published in the town meeting warrant, we cannot present on town meeting floor a number that is higher than what was published. You can always revise that number down, but you cannot prevent, present a higher number at town meeting than what had been published and sent out to everybody. So, this is why we're being conservative with that number. We expect that it will be hopefully lower, but we can't go into town meeting and revise it up. We can always bring it down. Chris?
So your, your, your recommendation is the numbers in the PowerPoint for the state aid funding, I mean, the FY thirteen state aid funding level? Now, I know this would be the question the Finance Committee would ask, would be, does that project out to be, for example, one fifty-five, four seventeen for Berlin, or not?
That was the clarification we were trying, trying to do up there, which is, when you look at the, if I can help, try and talk this, when you look at just the Berlin Memorial School budget, the school-related expenses in our projections for health insurance and the unemployment, the net decrease for Berlin Memorial was a hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars. The assessment increase for Berlin, based on the worst case scenario, is an increase of three fifty-seven, three fifty-seven. So when you apply three fifty-seven to the reduction at the Memorial School, you have a net change from FY thirteen, it'll be two hundred thirteen, two thirty.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that to your benefit.
That's okay, no, no.
I understand that.
Yeah, the other thing from my perspective, I'm more comfortable bringing the conservative number four, because even today's news that the House was announcing did not make me optimistic that they were going to be generous towards education. They were talking about transportation funding and not education funding when we were making announcements, which is unfortunate. Any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any other?
All right, thank you. Next is the Lions Club waiver, and I just wanted to bring this up. We had talked about this at the last school committee meeting, about the fact that this past year, because of the transition and everything that happened with our change from one building to the next, we weren't able to have the Lions Club use this facility this year, or our previous Tohonto building this year, and so we'd like to actually waive the fees for the Lions Club so that they can use it for next year, and we can waive that fee for them because of their inconvenience that they had this year.
Yeah, for the basketball tournament.
For the basketball tournament that they had in December, they had used the municipal building this year. So that was just something that, you know, was an outreach to the community. But badly, they couldn't do it, there was a, a reason why we feel badly about this is because there was some misperception. People thought that we weren't allowing them to use the space, but yet we could have our own teams use the space during that December break, and it was a specialized agreement under special circumstance, because technically, the building was not ours after December twenty-first, the old Tohonto was not actually ours, so it was a special agreement because of the building project, we weren't able to actually use the gym like we were supposed to, and we couldn't be without the use of the gym, so they gave us an allowance to use that building until January fifteenth, but all of that happened within days, because we were, you know, panicked of what are we gonna do with our games that we have scheduled, so I think there was a misunderstanding, and I just, I feel badly about that, so I'm asking the school committee that we do an outreach to the Lions Club, and we allow them for next tournament, that we waived their fee.
Yeah, no, thank you, because this came up because the bleachers weren't installed, and the gym, we didn't have an occupancy permit to use our gym here, so the, our teams were using the gym at the old school, but that was, again, a new special permission. So this came up, and this came up at the last minute, we were discussing changes to the policy for use of the gym, and that's how that discussion arose, and when we found out that there was some confusion and miscommunication about use of the gym.
That's correct.
So the idea came up that this was a one-time waiver.
Were there any other groups that asked to use the building? If they had, they would have had to forego it this year, correct?
That is correct.
During that transition.
Yeah, it was during that transition time.
Right. But, you know, what else happened to call and ask to use?
No, and the Lions Club typically use it during that week.
I just don't want to be perceived as playing favorites.
Oh, no, no, they typically use this that week, and, you know, we figured we were gonna be able to let them use it, and we couldn't let them use it because the construction didn't work out the way it was originally planned.
So this was sort of a one-time gesture, came up with the idea to do this, just for next year, because we're working on, part of working on the policy for use, for use, it came up in conversation.
So, so, what's the motion you want to make?
I would just like to have the school committee, I'd like to recommend that the school committee move to give a one-time waiver to the Boylston Lions Club for the use of the facility without fee for one time, because of their inconvenience that they had this year.
What's our usual fee for that?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, it's, it's on your policy. Sorry, your question.
Okay. Can I just suggest that perhaps we also put this in a letter to them?
Yes.
Why, and for this one time, and?
Yes.
Yes, to be clear, that it's a one-time.
Okay.
Yes, to the, send us the letter.
Then I'll make the motion for, for yourself.
With my suggestion?
A letter, and it's a one-time.
Thank you.
Waiver.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Future agenda items. And school committee comments. Chris?
I just had a couple of questions. Did we need to take a vote to put the article on the special town meeting warrant for Berlin, or for Boylston, I don't know which one.
I know we did it at the Boylston meeting, it was similar.
Did we do that last week? We did it last week.
Did we do it, Berlin?
No, no.
Here?
No.
Oh, here.
You did it last week, at the, I pray for the workshop.
You did that?
Yep.
Yeah, good, okay. I would also suggest that we put together a charge for that subcommittee that we were talking about previously with Dr. Hammond, a charge that the school committee says this is what we want that group to do. And I was also wondering whether we were going to have appointments made to the Finance Director's search?
Yes.
And, okay, I'll just, and then I also have one more question about, do we need to vote to accept Minas' entry plan?
You don't have to, you don't have to make.
Minus process, I didn't know whether that was something that we needed to do.
No.
And we're gonna be bringing that forward to the district governance meetings, and I just thought maybe that would be something we had to do before we then, we're gonna use it.
Well, also, can you use that as a corporation next year, as, I don't know, goes, superintendent's purpose for evaluation?
I mean, any discussion, or should we do that already?
That talks about the phase one, the, I don't have the transcript, the, the steps to the superintendent evaluation. That's one of the phases of the evaluation. The entry report can be, uses the first phase with the update. The notes are back here. So I don't know, well, I don't know if, I don't know if we need to accept it, but that's, that's gonna be incorporated into that process, as the updates to the entry report will be incorporated into that process, and that's sort of our starting document.
So. Committees don't typically vote to approve an entry plan, it's not going to say that you don't, that you can't, it's just that's not the typical procedure.
Okay.
Usually a superintendent does their entry plan, and they bring it forward to the school committee as a reflection of, these are my findings, and this is what I found. What the school committee chooses to do with that entry plan after where it is up to the school committee, but it's not typically, that it's, it doesn't mean it has to be, or it can't be, it's just that's not typical practice. You choose to do that, and put it on there, and you want, the school committee wants to put it on there as a business item, you vote in the future, that's what you decide to do. Okay.
So we also have the arts policy, which we're still working on, that includes the music policy. We are a little bit behind on our policy, especially because we missed them in the snowstorm, and I think Diane was going to go with some.
Which, they're, yeah, there's just another about the use of facilities, and that's not ready to even bring forward to subcommittee yet. There's a lot of work being done with Peter and Diane on that.
Okay. So that's our, that's, that's still in our future agenda.
I also just wanted to comment also in response to the appointment made to the Finance Committee search. We have Angela from Berlin, and we have Brad from Boylston, that has, they have both volunteered to be part of that committee search. We have somebody from the Finance Committee, from both Boylston and Berlin, and we have our administrative team that have formulated, we're formulating a committee. We're still in the process of actually getting the dates and finalizing the, the candidates, so we're hoping next week, on April ninth, to actually look at the candidates and review the applicants, to actually determine who will be interviewing, and then we'll be bringing forward, after our interview, we'll be bringing forward candidates to the school committee for their full interview process. So it is in the process, it is going, it's been very difficult, because I wanted, felt it was very important to include the Finance Committees from both towns, but I also put it out there for the Select Board members as well, that nobody on the Select Boards of either towns have, have offered to come forward, that the Finance Committee members have, so we're just trying to get our employees and school committee and town all together to be able to do the applicant process.
So are we getting, is it, is it going to be a time, are you getting started before this vote of appointing would happen?
What do you mean?
The next meeting that we have, the region is.
The end of April.
Okay, so we can appoint then, and then the process will start up, just, just curious.
Good. We are, we are in the mood, and we are looking at the applicants, and we have our committee together, and we're moving on as quickly as we can, so hopefully we can bring candidates forward on that April twenty-ninth, again. From what Chris said, I believe we probably need to come up with a charge for the subcommittee if we want them to move quickly.
Yeah, well, we, okay, have that written down, hopefully. Christine has that too, we have that branched off into two charges. One, the immediate, how do we get moving on the Indiana school agreement to go there?
Well, if, if that's what the charge is to do.
That's my point.
That's.
They need to know what they need to do between now and then, they need to know what they need to do between now and then, what the committee want them to do.
I didn't know there was that much of a rush on it.
Well, you just, you have some staff, so I think maybe some of the shorter piece, because they could at least. Such as how to look at the inter-municipal agreement, what, what they do, they could contact their town and talk to their town officials about that, like Dr. Hammond said, I'm remembering, because Dr. Hammond said that could take a month to two months, and if you're talking three months, we're looking at potentially going into our July first, and the staff would kind of need to know what their, how they're gonna be paid, or how they're gonna be serviced. I think that's where, I, I could be wrong, but I think that's where the school committee is, is coming.
That's where I see any urgency, because we do have that.
Well, they didn't even have a vote on the agenda, is my concern.
No, we have the topic.
Yeah.
Presented in general on the agenda, so it's not like it's a surprise.
No. I would suggest that we give the charge to investigate inter-municipal agreements with the town of Berlin and the town of Boylston, selection and incomes, and then the part that I wouldn't know, look for direction, is the unions, because you would need to ask if they're willing to, is that something the school committee members of the committee could do? I think between now and April twenty-ninth, you might want to just work with your. The municipal. The municipal bodies first. It's just, and just to investigate, that's all I would say.
That's what we need, is something to say to define what the charge is, because otherwise, you know, people are gonna go this way.
That sounds like exactly what we're looking for.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that, so the rest of the committee could take a vote on that.
So you're.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Well, can you read the motion?
Sure.
Does Christine have?
To investigate inter-municipal agreements with the towns of Berlin and Boylston, selection and incomes.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Call the other favor? So then that's, the future agenda items will report back on that initial motion, and then the next meeting, they'll all to talk about the charge for the bigger picture.
So it's good?
Okay.
I just wanted to ask the superintendent at some point in time if she could share her survey results that she did at the eighth grade, and also would like to commend her for, since I've been on the committee, which has been a little while, polling students, exiting students, finding out what they're thinking, what they're doing, has always been something that I feel like we haven't maybe done as well as we could have with, as a school committee, and the only reason we want that information is so that we can do a better job servicing the students that we have, and I'd just like to commend you for taking that initiative, so it's appreciated, and if we could get, you know, at some point in time a report on your findings, that would be amazing. Sure. Thank you.
I was going to ask one question, worth it brought up earlier, and we can't, Diane, on this, is there any results on your study with regard to changing the class ranking, or whether we rank our class at all?
Currently, not yet, to be honest, but I've not had time to do that yet.
So if we can put that one as just a reminder. Any other items from the school committee? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to go into executive session for the purposes of contract, negotiation, with non-union personnel, not to be getting in open session.
This is a roll call vote? Angela?
Second.
Second. Angela?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
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 Rebecca, aye. I declare that an executive, executive session is necessary to protect the negotiating position for the board.
Larry, can you just sign?